Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll get started. I'd like to call to order the City Council, City of San Carlos, City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting of July 9th, 2018. Would you please rise and join me in this pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next item is, are there any changes to the ordered agenda, Ms. Peterson?
No changes this evening.
Anyone on the dais or anyone else want to change the order of agenda? All right, report from closed session?
No report from closed session, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and we have presentations, oh my gosh, all kinds of presentations tonight. We have our Planning Commissioner and Residential Design Review Committee member going off, so, let's see, I might as well go down here and talk to the microphone. So, we have three planning commissioners going off tonight, and I think everyone served, is that right, six years?
Six or seven.
Six or seven years, plus we have a lady who served for how many years on the residential? Seventeen years, Bonnie? You were like, twelve when you started? You're welcome. You know, this is, it's bittersweet because there's, there's an awful lot of experience in those six-year, seven-year terms, times three, and of course Bonnie's seventeen, that's going to go off, so now it's going to be, I think, a little bit harder to replace everybody all at once, but of course we're going to do that in November also, up here, so I guess this is the year of the change. So Jesse, you want to come up first? We'll start with you. Jesse Gutierrez started in 2012 on the Planning Commission, and of course Planning Commission duties, I'll just say this once, I won't repeat it for the others, primary duties were to participate in administration of the zoning laws and policies of the city, make recommendations to City Council regarding land use, review proposed development projects, and advise us to the overall development and maintenance of the general plan of the city. And whereas Jesse Gutierrez exhibited dedication for ensuring new development would add value to the San Carlos community, and whereas during his tenure on the Planning Commission, Jesse Gutierrez made invaluable imprints on some of the most significant projects in the city of San Carlos, including design review of the Transit Village, Wheeler Plaza, the Landmark Hotel, and Meridian 25. There's other, other whereas is here, but I'll just skip down to a great asset to the Planning Commission, and will greatly be missed, and on behalf of the City Council and myself, and everyone in San Carlos, we want to thank you very much, Jesse, for your service. So we have a proclamation, and we also have a coin for you. Would you like to say something?
Just, yeah, thank you to staff, because staff does an incredible job, they do a lot of work that makes our job a lot easier. Definitely going to miss the Planning Commission, it feels like we became family through six, six or seven years together, so, but just thank you for, for the opportunity.
Thank you, appreciate you and your family, the family giving up the time.
Yes, absolutely.
Definitely. Now you get to see Daddy a lot more on Mondays. We'll go to the second person, be Angela Harper-Peterson. Angela, you want to come up? Again, Angela was also, Angela was appointed in 2011, so you have seven years on, that's right, an extra year. The same as Jesse with the zoning laws and et cetera, et cetera, whereas Angela Harper-Peterson exhibited a passion for ensuring new development would be of quality architecture, have lasting value, and contribute to San Carlos's character, and again, whereas her tenure on the Planning Commission, Angela Harper-Peterson made invaluable imprints on some of the most significant projects in the city of San Carlos, the 2011 zoning ordinance update being the exception to the one that we didn't, I didn't read for Jesse. So again, on behalf of the whole city, and certainly the City Council, we want to thank you for your seven years of service, and give you a proclamation and a coin. Angela, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I just want to take the opportunity to thank the City Council for giving me the opportunity to serve on the Planning Commission. It's really been a wonderful seven years, and I just thoroughly enjoyed it, and I was truly honored to do it, so thank you. And to the staff, who is honestly the hardest working staff that I've ever encountered, thank you so much for everything you've done to help me become a part of this, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Angela, very much. And your family gets to see you now, so that's good. David Silberman. You got to come up, David, I'm not, I'm not walking to you. I know, I know you're, I know you're, I know you're county council, but I'm not, I'm still not walking to you, so anyway. David was appointed in 2012, so a six-year term, again, the primary duties we already listed, whereas David Silberman exhibited leadership, dedication, oversight, analysis, and application of San Carlos's many regulations, notably the Transportation Demand Management Ordinance, and during his tenure, again, made some significant projects in the city of San Carlos, as I mentioned, Transit Village, Wheeler Plaza, Landmark Hotel, and Meridian 25. Whereas, whereas, and again, on behalf of the City Council and the entire city of San Carlos, I want to thank you very much for your, for your service, David.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Never hand a lawyer a microphone, never hand a lawyer a microphone. I'm just very grateful for three things. One, I'm grateful to have been a part of some really cool development in the city. I know that some folks feel that San Carlos grew too fast, I disagree, I think San Carlos has grown really smart, and it's really been, it's been fantastic to believe that I contribute even a little bit to that smart growth. Second, I am also extremely grateful for staff, they actually, that's where the smart comes from, staff did an amazing job over the six years that I was on the commission doing planning work, so that when the decisions came to us, a lot of the decision-making was just making things a little bit more perfect. And third, I'm grateful for both Angela and for Jesse, if he's still here, because I feel like I found some kindred spirits, they're smart, they're funny, and I think, like me, they have a tendency to volunteer a little bit too much, and always say yes, and because of that, I apologize to my wife and thank my wife and daughter for being patient all of those Monday nights.
Thank you, David, very much. And again, back, back to your, back to your family. Next, Bonnie McClure, Bonnie, you want to come up? Now Bonnie was on the Residential Design Review Committee, formerly known as the Exception Design Control Committee, where they come up with these names, I do not know, but anyway, her primary duties were to conduct design review of proposed single-family residential development, and ensure compliance with the general plan and applicable zoning standards, including design review criteria, whereas Bonnie McClure exhibited tireless efforts and diligence in reviewing hundreds of applications with attention to detail, and during her tenure on the Residential Design Review Committee, Bonnie McClure made numerous side visits to better understand how new homes and remodels could blend into existing neighborhoods, while also carefully listening to the neighborhood input, and seventeen years of dedicated service, and I served on this commission, this committee for about, I think, five years, and I had hair when I started, and I don't, I lost it all. Bonnie, seventeen years, thank you so much, on behalf of the city, behalf of the council, myself, for all your work, thank you so much.
I just wanted to thank the city for the opportunity to serve, because it was really a lot of fun, and I got to know the streets in San Carlos that I would have never seen, there were so many different places to go, and the staff was very cooperative and helpful.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Bonnie, thank you, again, thank you to all of the commissioners.
Thank you, Bob. I just want to add my, my thanks to Bonnie and the planning commissioners for your service to the city. I was on the Planning Commission and the, what we called the Architectural Review Board back in the late eighties and early nineties, and it's not an easy job, the meetings went long, we had seven planning commissioners then, you know, a lot of issues that we had to deal with, there was a lot of work to do, I don't think I ever worked so hard, being on the council is, is a lot of fun, being on the Planning Commission was also a lot of fun, but it was a lot of work, and I just want to, again, extend my, my thanks to you, I think what you've done for the city is very much well-appreciated, and I wish you guys help in the future, and the three people replacing you have big shoes to fill.
Mr. Ober.
Thank you, Bob. I, I won't repeat everything that Ron said, although I definitely feel the same way. Thank you very much to Bonnie and Jesse and Angela and David for, for helping out for all the years that you did. One thing I did want to add, though, is I also will miss the fact that each of you were resources to me personally at one time or another in learning about stuff, and that's an off-and-on appreciated role of the commissioner, and a very important one, so I thank you very much personally for all the, all you did over the years to help educate me, and good luck with the next phase of whatever it is you plan on doing with your free time.
Which would probably start right now, if you'd like to go, so you don't have to stay, honest, unless you want to listen, listen to us talk, but I kind of think you've done that a few times. Thank you all for coming, and again, thank you all for, for your service, anyway, great. Okay, the next item on our agenda is public comment, this is for folks wishing to address the City Council for matters not on the posted agenda, we usually limit speakers to around two minutes, I have about six or, five or six cards tonight, so we'll go through as the way they were handed to me, the first speaker is Robert Dormay. Dormay?
Yes, I'm a property owner, 774 Chesapeake Street, the end of the block, and the school has declined in value, I mean, the city has declined in value, I've been living here too long, with the new additions of the central, now it used to be Central School when I served time there, kindergarten to the eighth grade, now it's Arroyo School and Central Middle School, and the, the street in front of my house is damaged, the curb is damaged, the curb is painted red with SCPD, I'm sure you understand what that means, but the law is violated constantly, it's an annoyance, they've damaged my property, they've damaged the sewer, they've damaged the sidewalk, and I can't list everything right here and now, but this has to be fixed, because in time, if it isn't, the city's going to be taking a court, I will take you to court, the city's taken me to court before, I will take you to court also, thanks to you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Next speaker is Kimberly, I didn't get a chance, okay, okay, I didn't get a chance, honestly, I would have said Nishano, but you know, would have been close, go ahead.
Nishano.
Go ahead.
Thanks, I'm going to try to keep it to two minutes. I stand here before you, not as a person about to educate you about the bad effects of cigarette smoke, but rather as a victim, if you would like to educate yourself on the bad effects of cigarette smoke, you can ask your surrounding neighbors like Belmont and Redwood City, because they already have a ban. I remember moving into my condo fourteen years ago, I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
Take your time.
Okay, where the neighbor to my right smoked cigars all day, and the neighbor to my left smoked cigarettes, and the lady across the hall smoked cigarettes, but I didn't smoke any. And every time I would walk into my hallway, the entire hallway was filled with heavy cigarette smoke and cigar smoke, I remember very distinctly when the neighbor to my right, who smoked cigars, moved out of the unit, and the people who owned that unit then moved in and started cleaning it out. They could not believe how hard it was for them to clean off the tobacco-stained walls and ceiling, they swore up and down they would never rent out this unit again to anyone who smoked cigarettes, because cleaning it was so difficult. The owner of the unit also knew where the cigar smoker sat, because there was a very dark, musty yellow tobacco stain on the ceiling right above the couch. I was diagnosed with asthma and severe migraine attacks due to cigarette smoke, according to my doctor. The migraine medication I take is incredibly expensive, and I have migraines almost daily. If any of you in this room have ever had a migraine headache before, then you know how debilitating it can be. How would you like it if every time you smelled cigarette smoke, you got a migraine headache? I had to purchase a $500 air filter for my bedroom in order to sleep, in order to sleep at night, because the smoke filtered into the bedroom from the closet door and the heating system. I've had fears of people burning down the building because of cigarette smoke, and because we share a common building, that includes me as well as my pets, and this could happen while I'm at work as well, my pets are at home alone all day while I'm away. In San Francisco alone, I know a few customers whose buildings burnt down simply because of one cigarette butt that somebody flicked. On any day, we can't open the window because somebody is smoking, just the other day when it was in the temperature of mid-nineties, we wanted to open the window, but then we couldn't because we could smell the cigarette smoke. At times we find cigarette butts laying around our, the front of our building, which makes it look really uninviting. On the second floor, there was a unit for sale, and a police officer who was interested in buying it took one smell down the hallway and decided he didn't want to buy it anymore. It was sold to someone else, it would have been nice to have a police officer in our building, he said he wouldn't buy it because he could smell the smoke. I hope he could put in place an ordinance for our city to not smoke in multi-unit buildings for the safety, well-being, and peace for our residents, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Edward Schlesinger.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for your time tonight, and I imagine that most of you live in single-family homes, and so like Kimberly, I'd like to share my experience of what it's like to live in a building that has secondhand smoke. I'm going to read from the notes that you may have received. "As you step into the lobby, the smell hits you like a slap across your face, a deep stench that curls your nose and stomach, a foul mix of tobacco smoke and marijuana. You want to hold your breath as you move up the stairs, but there's nothing you can do. The smell follows you down the hall as you rush to your front door, wondering how much all this is adding to the unseen scale inside your body that will one day tip your fate into judgment of the big C, cancer. You rush inside and you close the door, leaving the smell behind you, grateful for a break from the stench. Then you have peace, at least for a moment, but your home is not invincible, because through the open windows, you know it's going to come when you least expect it, when you're reading a book or preparing a meal. Your nose reacts first and your mind tells you exactly what it is. Someone's cigarette smoke has entered your home and lingers like an unwanted visitor. You can't see it because it's invisible, but you know it's there, you know how it's gotten there. Someone outside has had a cigarette. The gentle breeze has lifted a cloud of smoke, brought it in through your windows, filled your home with something that you can't get rid of. You rush to close the windows and pray, wishing the smell and substance would leave. You close the windows in hope, hope that your, hope your body is not filled with tiny particulate deadly, hope that this madness will end, hope that someday something will change." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. David Pollak. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is David Pollak, and as a San Carlos resident concerned with gun violence in our community, I propose that San Carlos sign on to the mayor's pledge against illegal guns. In 2006, former New York City Mayor Michael Bloomberg and former Boston Mayor Thomas Menino formed Mayors Against Illegal Guns, a coalition of fifteen mayors, since then, they've built a bipartisan group of more than 1,000 current and former mayors from every state. California cities have, many of them have signed on to the pledge already in this local area, includes Berlingame, East Palo Alto, Menlo Park, Mountain View, San Jose, and San Francisco. Francisco. Most recently, Foster City placed the pledge on their council's regular meeting agenda on July 2nd and voted unanimously to sign on. As the mayor's, as the city manager's staff report indicated, there is no fiscal impact to the city. On April 27th, I sent a email to Mayor Grisilli requesting San Carlos consider joining with the other 1,000 mayors. I followed up by submitting a copy of the email to the city clerk on May 4, and subsequently, at least on two occasions, raised the topic with the mayor requesting the city council's consideration. Why is it important that San Carlos demonstrate ongoing support for gun violence prevention? Because there's still so much to be done even at the local level. Cities such as Sunnyvale and San Francisco have already enacted ordinances placing more stringent requirements around safe storage in homes and penalties for improper storage. Education in proper gun storage also plays a critical role. I therefore humbly request the pledge be placed on the agenda for the next council regular meeting. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Neelu Jenks?
Hi, good evening. I just want to follow up on the email I sent last week and just reaffirm that I would love if our city would join other cities in our county in sending a letter against separating children or just reuniting children. I know that's ended, but we have a lot of families to reunite, and I'd appreciate if we join East Palo Alto. And I know Redwood City and Belmont are also considering it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Dan Mueller or Muller? I'm not sure which way you say it.
Mueller.
Mueller. I got it right the first time. Okay. That's one.
I wanted to add on to what Kim and Ed had to say. So I'm at 222 Laurel Oaks condominiums. And in my case, it doesn't matter if the windows close. When the neighbor smokes next to me, it comes right through the wall and it's right in our unit. A lot of these units here are older housing, so they're really thin. So, and as an ex-smoker, I don't need the additional secondhand smoke. I've already done my share of damage. I don't need more. So I'll give you the prepared bit I have, which is, as of April 2017, there are 51 jurisdictions in California that have adopted a strong ordinance that prohibits smoking in multi-unit housing, including but not limited to Redwood City, Belmont, Foster City, San Mateo, Hafnum Bay, Berlingame, Saratoga, et cetera, et cetera, Marin County, and of course, San Mateo County. These ordinances prohibit smoking in apartments as well as townhomes or condominiums that have shared, common walls, floors, ceilings, and ventilation, including balconies and patios, even if you own your own dwelling. These cities, these counties, recognize that they have a responsibility to protect the health of their residents. And to the opposition that which to cite a right to smoke in their owned, multi-unit home, they state simple and clear, "The issue is that cigarette smoking negatively and dangerously affects the health of nonsmokers in the building," as identified by the county health officials and the Center for Disease Control. So how can San Carlos, the self-proclaimed city of good living, continue to be in opposition to its more progressive and compassionate neighbors, to continue to allow its citizens to poison fellow citizens in their own home? This may be the San Carlos I grew up in, but as a citizen who cares about the health and well-being of the citizens in the city, I urge the San Carlos City Council to join the modern age in approving an ordinance to ban smoking and all multi-unit housing.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask Tara or Greg to remind me, did we not at an earlier meeting direct staff to bring this topic back to us? I just wasn't sure if we got that out or whether we were still missing a vote of the three votes that we need to have to put it on the agenda process.
No, you did vote, and we have it on the tentatively scheduled for the 27th of September.
Thank you. Mr. Krokot?
I just have a question, I suppose, for one of the speakers. I know we really don't interchange with speakers, but one of the fellows mentioned about marijuana smoke. And about, probably about 15 months ago, I got an email from someone who lives up on Britton in the complexes up there, asking for what you're asking for. And in my interchange with them, an email, I asked about marijuana smoke or, you know, that type of thing. And they weren't interested in that. And so I wasn't interested. So my question is, are you, you mentioned in your little story here about marijuana, is that, would that be included in what you guys are looking at? Because if you are, you know, that would change my thinking about it. Come to the, just, and if you could just be real brief on the question.
Like, secondhand smoke, when it mixes with marijuana smoke, is like the worst thing ever. Like, secondhand smoke on its own is terrible. Marijuana smoke on its own is relatively, I could live with that. Maybe other people would say no. But for me, like, when you mix it together, that's what I'm experiencing.
I'll take that as a yes.
Could you ask me your question, just in a yes or no, please?
Sure. So as I put it to the person who contacted me earlier, I asked them, are you including marijuana smoke in your ban? And they said no. And so I wasn't interested in, you know, carrying the football for them, if you will. But if it is inclusive of marijuana smoke, then, you know, would show support. I guess it's orienting it and beyond the diocese.
We're going to have it, so we'll just let, that'll be discussed when we have our...
My purpose would be to answer yes. I would prefer it included.
Very good. Thank you.
When we bring it up at the regular meeting, we're going to go through this...
Not briefly?
No. We're going to go through this whole thing. We're going to go through this whole thing again. So, okay. Like I said, we're just going to be repetitive. Any other people that would like to speak on any item not on the posted agenda? Okay. Next item is consent. Consent counter items are usually done by one motion. Do I have a motion for consent? Don't all rush at once.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that, I approve the, move to approve the city council consent items A through H, but I would like to add my personal no vote on item 7D. That is the proposed traffic signal in Alameda. I still think we made a mistake in not approving that.
All right. City clerk has that. When it comes to a vote, whenever?
I second.
All right, so moved and seconded.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I do need to either pull item C or just note that I voted no on the, when it was on the diocese before.
We can have you record it as a no vote on that.
Okay.
Is there anyone else? All right. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Krokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
I'm voting yes on everything except 7G is in George, on which I am voting no.
Okay. And Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. So you have all those broken down?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Item 8, reports to council. Reports to council are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. So it's receive update on the May 5, 2018, excuse me, gun buyback event, which is a verbal-only report. And who is giving that? Chief, you're giving it? Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. In February of this year, I was assigned the gun buyback program from Sheriff Bolanos, and it introduced me to three wonderful people, Danielle La Campagna, Neelu Jenks, and Becky Dodson. And together, they came to me and meet me in my office in Redwood City to discuss wanting to do a gun buyback. And they had a plan on how they were going to go to each city in the county and ask them for a minimum donation of $5,000. And with the, with all the money they were going to raise, they were going to try to buy as many guns in the county as they could. Of course, the first city they came to was San Carlos. And as San Carlos always does, San Carlos set the benchmark for every city in the county. They donated $50,000 and started it off. Our goal was to get $75,000 in donations. We were very fortunate with the 11 cities and other private donors to get $136,000. Other donors that were involved were the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, Congresswoman Anna Eschew, Congresswoman Jackie Speer, Assembly Member Kevin Mullen, and of course, Sheriff Bolanos. We also partnered with Chief Mulholland of Redwood City, and on May 5, we held this gun buyback in the city of Redwood City. We utilized 19 sheriff's office employees, which Carlos Bolanos donated their time and efforts. And Chief Mulholland donated 14 Redwood City Police Department employees. On that morning, we set up, and it's one of those things where it's always nice when a plan comes together. We set up and we were set to open at 10:00 or 10:00 a.m., and we were set, ready to go at 8:30. And by the time we were set up and ready to go, there was already 25 cars ready to come in. So we opened up a half hour early at 9:30. We were set to start at 10, like I said before, and go to 2:00 p.m. And in that time period, we served over 100, I think it was 152 people came through the line, and we collected 426 firearms. And these are firearms that were in people's homes that they weren't using. They were susceptible to burglary, misuse, accidental discharge. It was quite a feat by the San Mateo, the citizens for San Mateo gun buyback to raise this money and put this together, and along with law enforcement assisting. We, like I said before, we collected 426 firearms within that four and a half hour span. 196 were handguns, 214 long guns, and 16 assault weapons. And out of those 426 guns, 16 being assault weapons, two were automatic weapons. One was an automatic M16, and one was actually a historic Thompson submachine gun. What we did, and what they spearheaded, was getting these guns off the street and making San Mateo County and every city a better place. I'd like to introduce Danielle La Campagna, Neelu Jenks, and Becky Dodson. Like to stand and invite them up? Like I said before, it's really amazing when you get citizens, concerned citizens within the county in these cities, and law enforcement working together, and we can really make a difference. I would like now to invite Danielle to start their presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Welcome, ladies, again.
Thank you very much. Good evening, council members. My name is Danielle La Campagna, and Becky Dodson, Neelu Jenks, and I are honored to be here today to report back about the San Mateo County Gun Buyback that we held on May 5. We, like many citizens, were looking for concrete ways to address gun tragedy. In our search, we learned that the county had not put on a large-scale gun buyback since 19, I mean, sorry, 2013, which was a very successful one. We wrote to Sheriff Bolanos in late February 2018 and requested a meeting to discuss putting on a buyback and see how we could assist in making it happen. Our group was thrilled that the sheriff was enthusiastic and agreed to implement and advertise the gun buyback, as long as we could raise at least $75,000 to give to participants for their surrendered weapons. Sheriff Bolanos' letter that you see here about his willingness to partner with us helped us tremendously in our quest for donations. Our group is determined and off and running from the minute we left his office. We decided to approach almost all San Mateo County towns and cities, and we asked for a modest contribution of $5,000 in order to engage municipalities, and we hope to galvanize our community. We prepared a PowerPoint and attended many a city council and town meeting. Our presentation focused on suicide, given that our coroner documented 42 suicides by firearm in 2016 and 2017 combined, and suicide by gun remains the most common method of suicide in San Mateo County. We were met with overwhelmingly positive response, and we are very grateful when you, San Carlos, contributed matching funds of $50,000, which resulted in momentum. This slide shows our contributors to the gun buyback. Also worth mentioning, Congresswoman Jackie Speer and Assembly Member Kevin Mullen not only contributed, but also attended the event and walked down the line of cars speaking to participants. It was actually quite impressive. I always do that. Okay. Not only was the event, oh, sorry. We raised a total, as you heard, of $136,100. And it was not lost on us that our success was due to the overwhelming concern related to the devastating mass shootings across the United States. We spent, as you heard, $42,300 at the May Gun Buyback. $93,800, the remaining funds, will be used for future gun buybacks and gun safety education in San Mateo County. Not only was the event publicized thoroughly, the event also received a lot of press due to the social media connections and organized press outreach by the sheriff's office, including through Detective Rosemary Blankswade, who's here tonight, the public information officer for the sheriffs. Our group believes that the visible presence of gun buybacks creates an opportunity to increase public awareness and further the much-needed conversation about gun safety. The sheriff, Chief Dury, just presented about the number of guns that were turned in. So we asked for a photo of the most impressive or deadly weapons, and you'll see the sheriffs here with those weapons, some of which I think Chief Dury mentioned. Citizens for San Mateo County Gun Buyback partnered with Gun By Gun to hold funds for this gun buyback and any future needs. Gun By Gun has gun buyback experience, and as a nonprofit, they make it such that private donations are tax-deductible. On the left, you'll see Ian Johnstone, a founder of Gun By Gun, who lost his father to gun violence at the age of 10 after a 16-year-old stole a gun from a house.
I'm going to pass this off to Becky.
Hi. Okay, so this, this next slide shows the survey that we handed out at the gun buyback. The sheriff's office approved the surveys that we handed out. 168 surveys were turned back in. Some buyback participants opted out, although we don't know how many. We made it clear there at the top, and verbally, that the survey was anonymous and voluntary. And its responses gave us very interesting information about the demographics and people's gun ownership habits, as well as useful feedback for future buybacks. So this next slide shows the gender and age breakdown of survey respondents. The vast majority, as you can see, are male and over the age of 50. This slide highlights that almost half those responding to the survey had not purchased the firearms they brought for themselves. They were gifts, et cetera. And that the same percentage of respondents, one-half, reported that they did not have any training in how to use firearms, which we think shows that these guns were largely unwanted and arguably unsafe. This graph shows that of the one-half of respondents who stated that they did not have any formal training, 67% of those homes reported that they would be gun-free after the buyback event, i.e. they had sold back all the guns in their household at the event. The stat supports the idea that gun buybacks are an effective means to remove unsecured weapons from homes in the community. More than one-half those responding stated that they were now gun-free, and of that 53%, the overwhelming majority, 85%, reported that they intended to remain gun-free. How did you hear about the buyback? News radio most effective, and the postcard was as effective as billboards, the postcard that San Carlos sent out. And the vast majority of those at the buyback were from San Mateo County. And the breakdown of the respondents by city, again, the vast majority, Redwood City, Woodside, San Carlos, San Mateo, within the county. All right, I'll hand this off to Neelu.
Hi. So this next slide shows the per capita participation in the gun buyback. You can see that San Carlos participated at a much higher rate than our population would make you expect. And we think it's because of the postcard that the city sent out. 31 respondents were from San Carlos, which was almost 20% of the total, and 24 of those people mentioned the postcard specifically. We participated at a rate over twice the average of the San Mateo County rate. We participated at a rate over twice the average of the San Mateo County rate. And eighty-two percent of those who mentioned the postcard now live in gun-free households versus fifty-four percent of the overall respondents, which makes you think that we reached an interesting demographic of people. And of those from San Carlos, seventy-seven percent said they do not plan to buy another gun versus sixty-seven percent of overall respondents. This is a pretty simple slide, just how people were storing guns or keeping them in their homes. And one thing to think about is maybe San Carlos participated at a rate that was higher just because we live in San Carlos, the three of us, but really, we didn't have a lot of people to tell about this. We, in thinking about it, it did make us realize that how, how do you reach gun owners? And, and we realized there were a lot of people that came to that buyback and every single one of them was a gun owner. And it was a great opportunity for education because I think one thing that everybody agrees on is you want proper storage and safety education and also education about suicide, considering two-thirds of gun deaths are, deaths in the United States are suicide. So we would like to see in the future, when you have all these people who have nothing better to do, so they fill out an anonymous survey, they might read information on suicide prevention in case they need it, but also they will read about, you know, gun safety, how they should store. There's a lot of campaigns on smart storage and we actually handed out trigger locks. We had a hundred donated to us. We gave out eighty-five. If any of you want one, you may have one. But they were taken, people loved them. We, we were fully aware that some people just want to get rid of unwanted guns and may want, you know, they're not just there because they hate guns, so we can make it a safety event. Things to consider is we could reduce the amount that is given for rifles because we got quite a lot of them, so maybe they're not worth as much, but to fifty dollars. Limit the number of guns to ten, of course, with sheriff discretion. If somebody came with thirteen they inherited, we could, you know, take those or limit to operational guns. And I think that's, all the guns we got were operational and finding ways to reduce the wait time. And then other things to consider is we could provide gift cards instead of cash. Gun By Gun, try that in L.A. You can get a twenty percent discount. So we have almost a hundred thousand dollars left. That could be a hundred twenty thousand dollars. And then also, is it possible to pass laws regarding loitering around a gun buyback so people aren't there just to buy guns and, you know, give better prices for things? And really, it's just a safety issue. There are a lot of police trying to monitor that. Interesting feedback from the surveys, people really like gun buybacks around the holidays, so I'm happy to make that trade. Take ammo. Provide a restroom is pretty self-explanatory. And one of the really interesting ones is some, like I said, some people waited two hours, but if you're there with just one gun or if you're somebody that comes and gives a gun and takes no money, which did happen, why should they wait the two hours perhaps? And despite all the feedback, despite waiting two hours, we got a lot of gratitude for both the organizational, the sheriff's office did a wonderful job, as well as Redwood City. And they just asked for it to be more often. The biggest thing we learned, we did distribute the gun locks ourself, is that it's a community service. We got so many thank yous. And if you're only going to look at it as a way to get rid of guns that are unwanted, which is a pretty good goal, you might not be happy with that. But if you consider it as a service that serves gun owners as well, I think that increases the value. That is something people really wanted. And finally, just some creative ideas. There's a lot of guns held on people who have psychiatric hold. We could give money to buy those guns, obviously not while they're in the psychiatric hold, but some of them are in storage for years. And also to have the fund for people in law enforcement, like if they know that there's a gun with a domestic violent incident where there is a high level of conflict, they could offer to buy the guns on the spot. Finally, we never really found out what happens with the melted guns, but other cities have done things like make art pieces. I think Seattle raffled off an art piece and put the money back into the gun buyback fund. Alameda has a shovels program, jewelry. There's a lot of options out there. So, that's all. Mainly thank you. San Carlos really helped quite a lot. I hope you're proud of what you did. I hope you got some satisfaction out of the results and thank you to the sheriff's office as well.
Thank you very much, Chief Dury and ladies. Obviously, you, you hit a, hit a, hit a, hit a point in our county to, that worked. Certainly, the first time you do anything, you're going to have pros and cons and next time, you're going to be even better prepared. And it's great that you're going to have all that extra money, then hopefully, we can have this, I don't know, we'll leave that up to the sheriff's department on how often, but it seems like at that stage, we could probably go at least another time, if not two more times. So that's great. And again, this is how things get done. People get together and you ladies did it. So I give you applause for that.
Yeah, just a couple of questions of clarification, if you would. The report here says four twenty-six and four twenty-seven. Do we know which figure is correct?
We do. We collected four hundred and twenty-seven guns and we spent, the sheriff's office spent another hundred and twenty-seven, or a hundred and twelve, or a hundred and twenty hours auditing each weapon, putting it in our system, checking serial numbers, see if there was any loss or stonings, any of them used in crimes. And one was turned in. It looked so real, it was actually a movie gun, but it could have been used in any kind of robbery or anything. So when we went to go disassemble it, because we couldn't find a serial number, and some of them were spin-off guns, some of them were for like a Smith &amp; Wesson revolver, but it was made out in Argentina, so we had to take it apart to find the serial number. This one here, we took it apart down to nothing and could not find a serial number. So when we took it apart, the breach and everything, we found out it didn't have a firing pin and it didn't have a, it didn't have a barrel. But at the time we collected it, it looked so real that we were happy to get it off the street because it could have been used in a crime. So we started with four hundred and twenty-seven and since it wasn't really a legal gun, we kicked it down to four twenty-six. So that's a long answer to your short question.
That's good. And then just a question about the, for clarification on the survey, it's got thirty-one respondents. I take it that was to the survey, but then there's this number of a hundred and forty, or, excuse me, a hundred and four? So did people necessarily have to declare where they were from or they could have done that anonymously? What's the one oh four? Is that the people that declared where they were from who turned in something?
No, that's the, if you, because you can't compare the cities with different sizes of population. So you can't compare the per capita rate of San Carlos to, say, San Mateo. So to make it a per capita average across states, we adjusted the size and so it's, you know, a ratio.
So what is the hundred and four then?
It's a ratio.
A ratio of what?
How much San Carlos attended, like per capita. San Carlos were a hundred thousand people compared to San Mateo, how much we participated. It's, you can't compare two cities of such different size and make it even otherwise.
So the, but the thirty-one are just people who?
Thirty-one is the actual people who responded and said they were from San Carlos. They gave their zip codes. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, great job, everybody. Just one quick question, when's the next event scheduled? Since it seems like there's some money left over.
We talked about December possibly, and there is supposed to be a national gun buyback date in December, but we don't know exactly when, so December thirteenth.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief Dury says, great.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to extend my gratitude to Nilu and Becky and Danielle. This is a lot more detail than I ever expected and also to the sheriff's department for all of their work. It was, I, when we made this donation, I had no idea that it was going to be this successful, so your hard work is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ladies, very much. Chief, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And we'll hopefully do this again, as they say. It'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is nine A. It's a study session, discussion of the formation of an Internal Revenue Code Section 501(c)(3) charitable organization with an endowment fund to serve as a community foundation for the city of San Carlos. Mr. Sevei, is that your area? No, it's not. Mal's just doing a service.
This will be me.
Oh, okay. Ms. Peterson, sorry.
Good evening, council. Again, my name is Tara Peterson, Assistant City Manager. Together with Greg Rubens, our city attorney, as well as Kimberly Chu from the city attorney's office, we put together this presentation for council's discussion this evening. So, what do I do? What do I point? Okay. You. Thank you. Sorry about that. So just to begin with a little bit of background as a starting point, council discussed exploring the establishment of a community foundation with the purpose of benefiting community service organizations that serve San Carlos. Council then allocated two million dollars from a PG&E settlement to fund an endowment for a community foundation through the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen revised budget. Staff has conducted preliminary research and reached, reached out to other cities and organizations about the formation and maintenance of their tax exempt nonprofit entities, their lessons learned, as well as their best practices. Just for this evening, we're not expecting council to take any action. Staff would appreciate council's feedback to ensure that any action that we bring back to the council meets the council's vision for this foundation. And then staff will return to council with a recommendation in this fall. So a little bit about community organizations. Many community foundations have been formed in California and they serve a variety of purposes, including among others, to fund a project such as building a building, a park, a library, or saving a historical building. They may form the foundation to disperse a surplus of funds that they have received to improve their community. They may form them to serve as an option for citizens who are asking for the opportunity to make a charitable donation to their communities. Generally, in organizations that, these organizations serve the community in which it is established, but it should be noted that most community organizations are not actually formed by the cities that they serve. Community organizations have been formed throughout California in a number of forms, including public charities, private foundations, endowments, or some join with other agencies to form a larger organization. Each of these forms is selected based upon who the organization is to serve, what kinds of things are to be funded, how funds are to be collected, and how those who establish the organization wish for it to be operated. Some of our local community organizations in the Bay Area include the San Bruno Community Foundation, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with. Currently, they've used five, fifty million dollars from its funds to create a new recreation and aquatic center. The Silicon Valley Community Foundation is one of the largest foundations in the nation and they seek innovative philanthropic solutions to various problems within the communities they serve. A lot of private donors provide funds to this foundation. The Los Altos Community Foundation was created to save a historic theater, which was up for sale. And now that they've saved the theater, they serve many other charitable endeavors. The Solano Community Foundation has a number of initiatives, including training and supporting other nonprofits that serve their community. They also provide grants to these nonprofits and they have a multiple endowment funds. And then the Richmond Community Foundation, which has been growing beyond its borders, so they're thinking of changing its purpose and expanding their geographical area and changing their name. Of these, the only one that was founded by a city is the San Bruno Community Foundation. So some options for council to consider, which were in the staff report, include option one, which is to form a private foundation with council-appointed members and directors or form a private foundation with one member or director appointed by the city council. These two options must comply with the Brown Act and the city could not be a beneficiary of the organization. In other words, if the city chose to, wanted this foundation to help fund a pool in the community or a sports field that would be operated by the city, neither of these would be able to use the funds for those purposes. Option three would be to form, to form an independent private foundation whereby they could elect to be subject to the Brown Act and the city could be a beneficiary. Two other options that the council may want to consider, which do not actually involve establishing a community organization, would be to either increase the amount of funds available to the city's current nonprofit program that we have or to establish a fund within an existing organization that can perform the administrative functions of a separate organization for a fee with the fund controlled by the city or an appointed board or committee. The Silicon Valley Foundation is one of those that the city could contribute to and have its own fund. So questions for the council to consider, what I thought I'd do is just go through these questions and then we could go back and kind of explain the kind of information we'd be thinking about asking for from the council. And that would be, what is the organization's charitable or exempt purpose? Who or how would the organization be governed? Who would be the beneficiaries of the organization? What is the scope of the organization's activities? Who can donate to the organization? What types of gifts and/or contributions can the organization accept? And will the organization fundraise? We'll come back in a moment to those. I want to go to one more slide, which is the kind of feedback that we would really appreciate from council this evening so that we would know kind of what direction to take going forward. So the first would be, does the council anticipate that the organization will provide funds for city projects or programs? Does the council anticipate that the organization will receive funds, donations, and/or contributions from private sources? And finally, does the council want to establish an endowment and is it the right approach for what council wishes to accomplish? And just for the benefit of our audience this evening, an endowment is a type of restricted fund that holds its principal and spends only the interest or a portion thereof that's generated. So with that, I thought I'd go back one slide and explain the kind of information we'd be looking for by each question. So the first is, what is the organization's charitable or exempt purpose? And what does that mean? It's mean, is it a broad or narrow purpose? Would it only benefit certain groups or the, the local community or would it be broader to maybe support organizations that not only serve San Carlos but serve other communities here in the county? How or who would be the, who, how will the organization be governed? And that would be if council wants to set up a, maybe a steering committee, which then could then be appointed for, as a board of directors? And what does the council want the powers to, of that board to be? And what does the council want to hold as its own powers concerning this organization? The next question is, who would be the beneficiaries of the organization? As I've mentioned before, would it be the city? Would it be just a specific group of nonprofits, say, ones that are involved with sports? Or would it be broader to cover those that are providing health services or home housing services, that kind of thing? And then what is the scope of the organization's activities? And again, that's a little bit the same as described above as far as who the beneficiaries could be, but it would be maybe, and we can have Kim maybe explain a little bit more as we're going through all of these particular scenarios, what exactly would be included in those activities? Who could donate to the organization? The way the organization would be formed depends upon how, who will be donating? Would it be nonprofits? Could private individuals donate to the organization? All of those have a bearing on what kind of foundation is formed. What types of gifts and/or contributions can the organization accept? Those are cash donations, maybe real estate donations. And then will the organization fundraise? Will that be an activity that the organization undertakes? All of those need to be addressed so that we can answer and determine what is the best form of the community foundation. So now the last, and then we had mentioned that we need this council feedback. I thought now is a good time to start answering council's questions. We have the three of us here and we're more than happy to answer any and all of your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. And Mr. Albert.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Tara. Not in any particular, actually, the order, just as they were sparked by the presentation, which was very good, by the way. I appreciate the effort that went into it and, and into the staff report. One dimension of this that I didn't see explicitly touched on here that I'd like to understand more about, I think this is probably a great question, and that's how does the structure, what structural alternatives map out against the gift of public funds issue? And what I mean by that is, I, I'm having a little problem, like if we... And what I mean by that is, I'm having a little problem, like if we, let's say, appointed an independent body, five people, and then we give them $2 million. How is that not a gift of public funds? And I know we have constraints on how we can do that. So I'd like to understand that better.
Well, thank you. That's a good question. The concept of the foundation, whatever form it's going to take, is it's going to serve a community purpose. So one of the exceptions to gift of public funds restrictions is that if you, as a council, identify a public or community purpose, you can spend the money in that form. So the protocol here is, the council's going to, ultimately, we hope, will direct us to take some action to see to it that an entity is formed, and then you will have an entity that has a stated purpose that'll be consistent with a public purpose that benefits the community, for example. And then you can make the gift to that organization, and it does not affect, it's not prohibited gift.
Okay, that's helpful. So it sounds like the, for lack of a better term, safe harbor on being able to apply that exemption relates to how the entity is structured. I mean, not that we would do this next thing, but hypothetically, if we set up an entity that basically said, yeah, you're supposed to help the city of San Carlos, but kind of do whatever you feel like, okay? That might be so broad as to say, well, wait a minute, that can't really apply to the -- so there have to be some constraints, for lack of a better term, put on what they can do.
Most nonprofit, community nonprofits, put safety constraints in the gifts. One example that I've seen is that the beneficiaries need to be a 501(c)(3) themselves. So those are automatically under the law of public purpose. The types of entities are created to help community or public purposes, and you're not restricted geographically, but most community foundations really do want to try and focus on the local community.
Okay, thank you. I have a few others, but I think the rest of these are fairly straightforward. Tara, when you made the mention of most community organizations are not formed by the cities that they serve, and of the examples of five, only one of them, the San Bruno one, was formed by the city itself, do you know roughly in general, I mean, is four out of five typical throughout the state? Or I don't know if there's anybody who collects statistics on that.
That's a very good question. I don't have an actual number, but I've talked to probably 15 different organizations, and only a couple had city funds, or maybe they had a little bit of city funds at the beginning, and then there was no longer.
So it's even, it may be even less than one out of five in that way. My next question is, some years ago, I had a conversation with Jim Ruane, the former mayor of San Bruno, about the entity they had set up. And I may have misheard him, so I just want to check against what your research was. As I recall, what he told me was that they set up an independent body with a board that basically was in charge of managing the endowment or whatever. I don't know if theirs was technically an endowment, but whatever it was, was in charge of doing that. But basically, their annual funding recommendations that the board came up with came back for, I guess you'd call it, a vote by the council? In other words, and the council didn't like go through and micromanage it, it was sort of all or one. It's either, okay, we're fine with this. Generally, that's what happened. In fact, I think Jim told me they never did have a vote where they objected to it. Am I remembering it correctly, or?
You know, I don't know the exact particulars, but I think I understand what Mr. Ruane was talking about. The San Bruno Foundation, because it's making a gift to the city, the city has to accept the gift, and the council has to actually act to accept the gift. So it's possible that an independent foundation will say, we want to give you X dollars to do this, and the council might say, well, we don't want to do that, so that you don't accept the gift. So the council does have a veto on if the city was a beneficiary. And in San Bruno's case, they were a substantial beneficiary, the aquatic center. In your case, if you do set up an independent foundation, and it's an endowment, and it's completely independent, you would still have that ability under the rules if that endowment decided to contribute to a city project or tried to restrict what the funds were being used for in the city. The council would be able to say yes or no to accept it. That's what the law provides. But if it's something consistent with city policy, then you would likely accept such a gift.
I appreciate that. I guess I'll have to go contact Jim, because that's different from what I remember our conversation. Maybe that's okay.
Well, I might be speculating a little bit.
No, you said you were speculating. That's fine. So, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Grokot?
If there were a separate entity created, how do the board members become board members? And a tag along question to that is, is there a way to set that up where perhaps they were voted in by the public? With the first question is, you know, what are some other models, if you can provide?
Yeah, I don't think, we haven't found, I mean, we could look to see if any nonprofits have set themselves up with having a public vote or a vote in some way. Typically, what happens is either a steering committee or a group of concerned citizens volunteer to become board members of the nonprofit, and then it becomes self-sustaining in that governance model. Usually, what happens is the members of the entity will vote in who the board is. So you could have a structure, come to think of it, that there were members of the foundation, and then the members vote in the board. I mean, there's ways to do it, so if that's the direction of the council, we can look into some sort of a broader-based method of selecting board members.
So a segue question to that is, or let me give you a scenario, and you tell me if this is a possibility as well, where initially, you know, the council interviews, like we do for planning commission and so forth, and we appoint a board, but from there on, it's self-sustaining. They vote in, you know, somebody decides to resign from the board, step down, and then that board would vote on new members, perhaps? That would be a way to do it? Bob's nodding his head from experience.
We'd be concerned that that might prevent, if the intention of the council is to allow for gifts back to the city, we just want to make sure that initial startup wouldn't prevent that in the future. It seems to me, though, that once that separation happens, that I think there's a good argument that you wouldn't be restricted after that initial appointment, but we have to research that just to make sure of that.
That'd be worth looking into, I think, yeah. And then, I'm just curious, well, this one, I think, might be separate because it already exists, but would there be a possibility of folding in the San Carlos Parks Foundation?
Did you look into that, or I can generally respond? You know, one of the, part of my research was to investigate if there was another nonprofit in town that we could repurpose for the program. And I came reluctantly to the conclusion that it was simpler for the council and for the new organization to start on its own with its own incorporator and its own steering committee and board of directors, because the complexity required to change an existing entity's charge would require new articles. If it was a 501(c)(3), we'd have to go back to the IRS to make sure that the new purpose is compliant with the law. It just seemed like a lot more work to try and repurpose an existing corporation. And so we put that aside and decided not to pursue that before we brought this back to you, but we did look at it.
And just two more questions, and again, this idea of folding in, could it be that it's set up in such a way that, once it's there, then all the, you know, the organizations that come to us now for funding, like Healthy Cities, for instance, the direction is, don't come to us for those kinds of things anymore, because we've got this foundation, and that's the intent of that foundation?
That's definitely a possibility that we considered. You could also continue to give money, as you do every year, but instead of keeping it, we'd actually put it into the foundation. That's another option the council would have if this was to be formed.
Okay. One more question, but it's not written down, and dug on it, I'm so old, I keep forgetting things, so.
We'll come back.
Maybe I'll think of it.
That's all right, we'll come back. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've got, I think I've got just about three. The staff report mentioned public charities, and then I didn't see it mentioned again, but when you talked about a private foundation, you said that that's one, an independent, excuse me, an independent private foundation would be an organization that the city could be a beneficiary of. Did I understand that right? So, does that equate to a public charity, an independent-private? I mean, we're using public and private in different ways. Or is a public charity something completely different? That's what was confusing to me.
That might be a question for Kim, because Kim did the research on that distinction for us. We had her look at that.
Public charity is a tax classification under the IRC code Section 501(c)(3). So a private foundation, a public charity, and a third category that we did not address because it's unlikely to apply here for these purposes is a private operating foundation. And those are just different tax classifications under a 501(c)(3) organization. And the distinction really has to do with the source of funding, where their funds come from. So generally speaking, a public charity 501(c)(3) generally receives more favorable tax treatment, but to qualify, the requirements are a lot more stringent, and the standards are higher. So for a public charity, the source of funding has to only come from other public funds and not from a private donor. Say, if a private party wishes to contribute or make gifts to this organization, it may disqualify that organization from being a public charity.
Can you give me an example of, is there a public charity around that you can think of?
Like Little Sisters of the Poor in San Francisco, isn't that a public charity? They raise money from individuals to provide for their building up there for the...
I'm not quite certain of the answer to that question. The reason for that is because it really has to do with the financials of that organization. You really have to kind of go into it.
To me, a public charity is, they go to the public and they get money. I mean, that's how I define it in my head. I don't know what the IRS does, okay? But I mean, I don't know what else a public charity, when you say public, to me, you'd be going out to the people, to the public, and getting money.
All right. So, I mean, that's just me.
I think the issue is, there's, the issue that we looked into was the concern that we might have difficulty qualifying for the technical tax requirements of that type of foundation. But the private foundation can raise money from all different sources and then provide, depending on the parameters, provide distributions or gifts to a broad category or a narrow category of beneficiaries.
So, it sounds like an independent private foundation would have a lot more flexibility.
That is correct.
Okay. Then the other question I have was, is it unusual for a city to fund a community foundation with, you know, seed money like we're proposing to do? Or has that been done frequently or with as much money? I don't know if that's your question, or maybe it's, I guess it's Tara. I mean, what happened when you called the other city, and you said, we want to form a foundation and give it $2 million?
Right. Some just gave some, a little bit of money to afford staff for an organization. Maybe they donated $25,000 the first year, and then they expected the organization to do its own thing. Some have given a large chunk of money at the very beginning. It really varies.
All right. But if we're giving, or creating a foundation with $2 million, it sounds to me like we probably can't put any strings on that money, that, you know, it's going to, there's going to be an independent board, and they're going to...
Put a lot of strings on it. Put a lot of strings on it.
We could put a lot, okay.
You have the authority to put whatever strings you want, or you can allow a lot of leeway for the board as well.
One of those strings be, we want you to, you know, make sure that part of your charter is that you raise money for some big public project that we want to build in town.
That is a very, that's a lot of reasons why some of these organizations get formed.
Okay, all right.
Another way of thinking about it is, once the foundation is set up, the donor to the foundation can put any kind of restriction they want on the gift that they're making to the foundation.
Okay, all right, all right. I'm getting a clearer picture. Last question. One of my thoughts about this earlier was that the community foundation could potentially be an umbrella organization. In other words, this could potentially be something that is very large. Would other foundations in the city, like Adult Community Center and Parks and Rec, would they be able to go to that organization and ask for funds from them?
Absolutely. That's one of the options that you could address with this. You could also set it up that they could actually create their own fund within our foundation, but that goes a little bit further than tonight's discussion.
Okay. All right. So that's questions I have. I'm hoping Cameron's going to make some comments, because this whole thing started with him, so. I want to hear his vision.
Mr. Johnson?
I was going to make some comments. So I had an opportunity to meet with staff a couple weeks ago, and I had an opportunity to ask a bunch of questions, and I sort of formed a perspective in my brain that I wanted to share with my colleagues, and at least as my form of council direction, and would love to have a discussion of it. First, I did want to recognize Tom Davids, who's our former mayor, who's in the audience, and I think it's very fitting that Tom is here, because what we're talking about tonight, I think, is the realization of a vision that you started many years ago with San Carlos together. And it's a recognition that we have so many great community organizations. They are apolitical organizations, they just want to do good in the community, but they're volunteer-based, they don't have a huge fundraising capacity, they're not necessarily professionalized. And wouldn't it be great if we had an umbrella organization that was a bit more professionalized, had more resources, that was not actually doing the programs, but was raising money to support all of the good work that everyone's doing? And that good work could be, you know, the Lions Club or the Kiwanis Club, they've been established for a very long time, or it could be a couple citizens who just want to do good in their neighborhood. And so I think we have the opportunity to do this. I think this could be a historic moment for our city, and that many decades in the future, when we look back, we could see a huge thriving organization with a growing endowment and doing lots of good every year. So that's the vision, and I think it's also just a really great strategic time, because we have a lot of high net worth individuals in town, we have a lot more business happening in town, we have a lot more development in town, we have people, companies, that are in a position to fund community growth and building community, and I think we have an opportunity to create a vehicle to capture a lot of those resources. And we get to do it with found money. So to your question, Ron, about, you know, have cities done this in the past? It's not often that cities wake up one day and get $6 million in their lap, and so this is...
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, it's an unexpected opportunity where we're not taking money that would otherwise be budgeted against other things. So anyway, based on the conversations that I had with staff, I came to the point of view that having an independent private foundation as the eventual outcome was the right thing. That allows the organization to be self-governing, and it allows it to be apolitical, it allows it to partner with the city, it allows it to accept all sorts of donations. But there's a period from here to there that involves creating a vision, mission, values, putting together a board, putting together bylaws, and that having council oversight during that transition period and having staff support during that transition period is crucial, so that it has legitimacy, so that the council has an opportunity, to Ron's point, put strings about, you know, is this the right mission and vision? Is this, are we comfortable before the money is eventually transferred? Do we have the right board in place? Are we happy? Do we feel like this organization is set up for success? So that's my perspective, is that ultimately, you want an independent organization, but that we need to go through some transition period of a year, 18 months, two years, however long it takes to get it to the point where we feel like it's a self-sustaining organization.
I had just had a couple of quick questions. I tend to concur with Cameron on...
I tend to concur with, with Cameron on the private, or independent private foundation. But again, I'm, I guess I'm getting confused on the chicken and the egg here. Okay, let's just assume that we said we wanted to do that. You talked about the steering committee. Does the council appoint the steering committee or is it just sort of evolve, you know, out of, out of the ground?
The answer is, it's however you guys would like it.
So we could theoretically, just like was mentioned before, and Mr. Grokot mentioned, we could say, "We're gonna interview folks who want to be on the, on the board of the San Carlos Community Foundation." And we would appoint the first board.
That's an option for you. Absolutely.
Okay, I mean, that's legal and we can do that. And then I would concur that, I think Mr. Johnson said, then after a period of time, whatever it is, hopefully short, we step back after setting up the guideline, you know, some broad guidelines, and then they are independent and they, they themselves appoint the next members. Let's say you have a three-year term and then after three years, another person would come on or something like that. Is that how legally it would work out? Because I would, I would think we'd step away.
Yeah. That's the question. I want to just make sure that, I mean, there could be just a period of time when there would be disqualification of making a gift to the city while someone that the council appointed, but then ultimately when they termed out or resigned and then the new board came on and it was fully independent in the absence of any appointment from, from the city council, that it would be free to that restriction.
Okay, so that restriction remains. Let's say we appointed five people and for the first, you do stagger terms, maybe three, two, one. But so until that third, that last person went off, it would be possibly three years before the city could get any benefit out of that foundation.
That would be my concern.
The city directly. Now, organizations in the city could, nonprofit, but the city itself couldn't be beneficial. But as soon as that fifth person, let's say that last person goes off, then the city could be beneficial.
That's right. And remember, there's a Brown Act requirement when, when there's the public, when the city council appoints the board, they have, they're a Brown Act body. But if they're, if they're a private foundation, they can elect to be in the Brown Act, but they don't have to be.
But the Brown Act would also expire when that last person that we appointed went off.
Can I ask just a clarification? So is that based on a formal vote to appoint? Is there, is there a step down from that in which the council could have some subcommittee, could interview people, but there's no formal action taken by the city or something where you're not putting the legal weight of the city on it?
I mean, there, there may be, it's a very good middle ground possibility there that, that the council is more like a nominating body as opposed to a selecting body. And so that might be the way that we can work through the, the issue.
So you could, getting back to the steering committee, we could appoint 10 people on a steering committee. We say, "You folks pick five members of the, of the community to be on this board."
Yes.
And that would, that would remove us from it, would make the city eligible the first day to get money out of the community foundation.
I mean, well, I, Kim did the, some of the detailed research, but to me, it seems that yes, that, that would, that would protect us. But as we work through the process, I'll just make sure that...
Sure, okay. Okay, Mr. Albert, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I like the idea, the vision that Cameron described and that Bob was echoing as well. But I have to say, the thing that concerns me is, the examples I know of, of these foundations, the ones that do best are the ones that, I'll use the term, grow organically out of the community. They are not set up by the public agency, except perhaps in the case of San Bruno where they had an enormous sum of money and it was sort of like, well, you know, here you go. So, you know, what I, what I can concerned about is, because I do want this thing to, to sustain and be able to grow and live over the indefinite future, is how do we achieve that? And one of the thoughts I had as I was listening to the, this most recent round of discussion is, you know, I wonder if maybe another approach before we commit to doing any, a particular thing is to actually, I'm gonna use the term RFP, but almost sort of put out a call to the community saying, "We would like to see the formation of a community foundation," okay? To support and make, improve the quality of life in San Carlos and have a very broad purview, not necessarily just Parks and Rec or one particular focus or whatever, and see what comes back. Because to me, you know, even if I was gonna be interviewing or selecting people, I would give a lot of mental points to a group of people who sort of self-organized and came together and said, "Well, how about us? Here's what we'd like to do." And then we could tweak their vision and put constraints on it because we're the one, we're the 900-pound gorilla who's gonna put the first $2 million check in there. But it would have some sense of organic growth out of the community. And I actually hope, if we were to go that route, I hope the gentleman in the office, the, the room that we were talking about helps put a group together like that, because I think that would be very consistent with what Tom's tried to do over the years. But anyway, I offer that as a slight alternative to what we're talking about. It doesn't, it doesn't actually prevent us from saying, if we put out this quote RFP and we don't hear back from anybody, then we can go, "Okay, fine. Now we're gonna have an interview process and pick people." Or a selection committee, pick the people who are gonna be the selection committee. But I'd like to give the community a chance to grow into this thing and say, "Yeah, yeah, we really want to do this."
Mr. Grokot?
So just to offer another model, if I might. Seeing no real pressing community need right now, like, you know, we sort of put to bed the idea of a community pool a while ago. Another option might be to have a, I guess you'd call it a steering committee of, say, three members who would be board members ultimately, but it would be their job to pick the rest of the members. And you could set it up where it's gonna be a five-member board or a seven-member board or however many you want. And then those three pick the rest. And that opens things up to what you were talking about, Greg, the idea that once those people are off the board, then that organization could fund something directly that is a city project. And in all likelihood, those three, you know, potentially could, could be off that board in, in just a few years. But it would certainly limit how, how many people you'd have to wait to have be off the board, right? So I, I point that out. Just a couple of things that I would like to observe or throw in there is from, and I think you're looking for this, this kind of commentary. For me, it would be preferable for it to be an organization that strictly focuses on San Carlos. And two examples where you see things morphing as time goes on. The Sequoia Hospital was initially supposed to be just for, you know, the district, but now they give money to outside the district. And that's been contentious and, you know, to some. And then even with our own youth center. Originally, it was just gonna be for the youth. We're raising money, we're gonna build this thing, it's just gonna be for the youth. And now it's kind of morphing into, not in a huge way, but, you know, a little bit of adult use and so forth. I'd rather not, you know, if there's some way to really build some walls to keep it so it, once it's created, it's, it's really for this community and is not giving money away to, to other communities. The other thing is, it's mentioned in here and it was in your report about, you know, how does it use the money? Can it use all the money or does it have to keep a certain reserve or is it cream off the top? And having gone to a private school and seen what they've done for years and years and years, and a lot of private schools do this, is they have a foundation and they only use the cream off the top. They do not dig into the capital, ever. And that would be my preference. It's a pretty conservative approach, but I think it's probably the best. And then lastly, just as I was listening to the discussion, to me, this is a little bit like raising a kid, which I never used to have experience with, but now I do. And, you know, your, your goal as a parent is, is as soon as you can launch them off to be making their own decisions and being responsible for themselves, you try to do that little by little, right? So that eventually when they're hopefully 18, you know, they can handle a lot of things on their own. And that's how I would see this from our perspective as a council, is we're sort of raising a child very quickly and trying to launch it off into its own world.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Bob. Yeah, Matt kind of, Matt's comment kind of leads into mine in, in terms of how this is created. Would we have like a, would there be a council subcommittee to create the bylaws and the structures so that we don't end up with an organization that does things we'd rather not, it not do? And, and I think of, of the whole concept of, of the bylaws because we have seen examples of bylaws not being followed. And I would like to really make sure that, you know, we have a hand in that so that the bylaws and the whole structure of the organization is the way we envision it and it is followed. Because if you have, say, a board that doesn't follow its own bylaws, that, that can create problems of its own. And we've seen that. And so I would like to make sure that however we participate in the setup of this, that we make it pretty strict. That's what I mean.
I envision that the council would be looking at a set of documents that would be pro forma, bylaws and articles with some of the limitations that you're talking about. An example, you know, with the endowment, if the endowment is the direction the council wants to go, we, we could have a supermajority votes, even unanimous votes to do certain things. And you could have a prohibition on your gift, like I said earlier, so that the $2 million seed money at least is treated differently than anything else, so that they can't ever spend it on anything else. Because if they did, the penalty would be they'd have to give the money back and, you know, or, or you would be able to, to take immediate action. There's some remedies that we could build into the documents. But there's no, nothing that's foolproof. I mean, people can do bad things. But we, you know, I think the charge would be to have that type of broad-based community board that's, you know, in, in that world and with quality people with good intentions. I think that's the solution to that, to that issue.
I apologize, Bob. I just have one, I have one more question. I just thought of, I assume that these foundations could accept gifts of, of land if you had a property owner that wanted to donate land that they had?
Yes. You'd set it different.
And I know this is pie in the sky and I'm always dreaming, but if a landowner who owned a substantial piece of land wanted to give the land to the foundation with the proviso that it be developed into a community aquatic center, for example, I assume that that could, could be, could be part of the, of the, of the plan.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
I was just gonna, I just wanted to respond to Ron to say, and I think we should all, I think we would all agree that it would be irresponsible to transfer $2 million to an organization unless we felt very comfortable with what that organization does. And that is really the, the final piece. And you don't, so the, it's really about what, what vehicle, what organization are we gonna set up? And then trying to get that to a place where you feel that it's good, that it's gonna do good for the community. And then we can vote to, to transfer the money. And so you have every opportunity to say, "I'm not happy with the way this is going. I'm not, I don't like the bylaws. I don't like the mission. I don't like the values." And so I just wanted to share that. And then I, I did want, I liked Mark's idea about getting more grassroots community involvement. When I had an opportunity to chat with staff, I know Jeff, you hadn't shared some ideas about sort of general outreach to the community to see if people wanted to participate. Did you want to speak to that briefly?
Sure. In the, in the past, and Councilmember Davids will recall this, the city has embarked in some endeavors like this that resulted in the formation of committees and groups. San Carlos Green, San Carlos Together came out of a visioning effort from the city. And I think Councilmember Olbert described it quite well and succinctly. And I think what would probably be the right approach is to, is to notify the community and look for volunteers to get involved in setting this up and get involved in creating the bylaws. And we'll work with the city attorney to, you know, make sure all the different legal parameters get put in place to address the concerns and wishes of the city council. But, but I agree, I think that, I think these organizations are most successful when we get the most people from the community involved. And knowing this community like you guys do, I think there's probably gonna be quite a few people who are willing to get involved, which will be great.
Mr. Albert?
Thank you, Bob. Yeah, just one thought I had as I was listening to this next phase of the conversation, I just want to share with my colleagues to, because it, it may be helpful in sort of plotting how we go through this. What suddenly occurred to me is we may be conflating two different things, okay? One is the establishment of a foundation. The other is making a donation to a foundation, okay? And in a sense, a lot of the discussion we're having is, well, gee, we, we don't want to give money, we only want to give money to the right foundation. And then we're sort of having discussion about, well, how do we create the right foundation that we're gonna turn around and give money to? And, and maybe what we ought to, you know, another advantage of potentially the initial phase of creating the foundation, turning it out to the community, is let's see what they come up with. I mean, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want to have like 15 different foundation proposals come forward because that'll probably dilute the personal energy that can make these things work. But if two or three people, two or three organizations say, "Here, here's what we want to do. Here's how we think we should be structured." I'd love to hear that, okay? And, and maybe give them feedback and encourage them to structure themselves a little bit differently, always with the carrot hanging out there, you know, whoever impresses us the most is the one that gets this $2 million. And, and that way we can use community crowdsourced thinking and energy and whatnot to actually make this thing work. Not, not that we couldn't make it work by just defining it ourselves, but I think it works better if the community grows it and we say, "Here's $2 million. Have fun."
Well, we might disagree on how, it depends on, I guess, on the organization. I can see a group of people coming up with a, with a, with a great idea and then changing their mind after we gave them the $2 million, but that's another story.
May I respond to that? Just, no, because that's a, that's a good point.
We have to write it up. We have to, as Greg said, we have to just write it up to make sure there's protection on the dollars.
That's exactly right. I mean, I know from personal experience that there have been significant donations made, for example, to the Ed Foundation that had constraints put on them. Because the person said, "You want the money? You agree to the constraints." And they usually say, "Sure." So...
Yeah, it all depends. And the other thing I want to make sure we put this in perspective, at least at the beginning, if we put $2 million, let's assume it, it's a foundation that, at least the one that I sit on, we have to give away 5% of the money. I think that's fairly standard. So if it was $2 million, and that's of the principal or the assets that you have, let's assume we made 7% of our money, we'd have, you know, like $2,140, we'd be able to give away basically $120,000 or something like that. And I certainly concur with the fact of keeping the principal, the corpus. And so you don't give away the, just give it away. So I just want to put this in perspective of how much we're starting with. Now, if someone comes in and gives us $20 million and, because there's a wonderful citizen, then we got a whole nother game. And, but at this point, I think we're, we're talking about fairly small project, unfortunately, Ron, sorry. Even if they gave us the land, we wouldn't be able to build a building. But, but anyway, I mean, there's a lot, I could talk about this for hours personally because, you know, it's near and dear to my heart. But, and I'm sure the rest of us were very enthused about it. What, what other kind of direction do you want? I mean, we've given you 9,000 different directions here, unfortunately. You want to narrow it down or have us narrow it down?
I'm looking at the questions and I think you've answered the, the core questions that, that we wanted to hear about as a group. And then the next step, I think, is to move it forward to the next step and get more focused on, on program for you.
I certainly also concur with the fact to keep it local and keep it in San Carlos. I mean, that, I think that's really, again, we're talking, the amounts of money we're talking about, I think it's gonna do a lot more good for us in a smaller amount than larger. Any other comments before we go on? All right. All right, we'll go to 9B. Again, a study session, we're not making any decisions on this tonight. 9B, just giving direction. Yes?
Mayor, is there any, are we, do we get any public comment, none of those? Do we ask for it?
No, not necessarily in a study session. I think when we get to the, when we get to the nuts and bolts, we'll have lots of public comment on that. Because we're really at baby step here, I think, in my mind. Discussion on small cell micro wireless facility on PG&E and light poles in the city of San Carlos. Mr. Seve?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. It's likely that micro wireless devices will be proposed in residential neighborhoods in San Carlos. And so this study session is a discussion of that potential. And Lisa Porras, our principal planner, is here to talk to you about it.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council. Like Al mentioned, this is a discussion item and no action is requested of the council this evening. Again, I'm Lisa Porras, Principal Planner with the city's Planning Division. And the subject of tonight's presentation will focus on small cell or micro wireless facilities. facilities. And as shown on this introductory image, micro wireless facilities generally consist of a singular antenna and associated equipment mounted either on a streetlight or a utility pole. So why is this before the City Council? First, just to clarify, we haven't received any formal application, although we have been approached by a wireless carrier who is interested and is very likely to submit an application to the city. This presentation is really intended to inform the council as well as the community that wireless carriers such as Verizon, AT&amp;T, and Sprint may be submitting not just one, but many, and quite a number of applications to install micro wireless facilities throughout San Carlos, including within some of San Carlos's residential neighborhoods. The presentation will also touch upon the driving factors, what's really driving the installation of these facilities. And last, we just wanted to touch upon and explain what our processing and permitting process would be once these applications are formally submitted. So what is a micro wireless facility? Generally, it can be defined as a low-powered cellular radio access nodes that operate in either licensed or unlicensed spectrums that have a range of 10 meters to a few kilometers and deployed using far more nodes, more densely spaced than macro facilities to meet capacity demands. So that's a really kind of technical definition. And I'm sure there's other definitions out there that are available online. So because this is rather technical, one of the things I wanted to provide is just a couple of images to kind of more generally assist the viewer in understanding the differences between the two. So on the left-hand side of this slide is a macro wireless facility, which is a facility that we're probably most used to seeing around town and in other locations. Whereas the image on the right is showing a micro wireless facility, again, which generally is different because it consists of just one antenna mounted on top of a pole with equipment located either on the pole or in above or below ground cabinets. And in this image here, you can see that most likely all the associated equipment is located below ground. And then just one other quick diagram. And this diagram here is basically illustrating the three primary components of a micro wireless facility. And the first, as I mentioned, includes a singular antenna, which is generally located on top of a utility or a streetlight pole. Streetlight is shown in this example here. And in addition, there's also equipment, radio equipment to process the signal, which is usually mounted onto the base of the pole itself. And in some examples that I'll show you in just a minute, it's typically located on the lower half of the pole. And in addition to that, there's a component of fiber optics or optical fiber running through the center of the pole, which is more easily accomplished on a streetlight. And then that fiber optic runs down through the pole to below ground cabinets. So why are wireless carriers wanting to propose micro wireless facilities in our community and in lots of other communities in California and across the nation? Well, one of the reasons is that the installations of the facilities are really being driven by the next generation of wireless speed, also known as 5G networks. Over the years, there's been a significant growth in what's termed as the Internet of Things, which is actually an industry term used to describe wireless data transfer between a range of devices, from home appliances like Nest or Alexa, keyless entry systems, to smartphones and virtual reality devices, as well as self-driving or automated cars. So all of this is really fueling the need for stronger and faster service with improved connectivity. These next slides, next few slides are examples of existing micro facilities, and these happen to be in San Jose and installed on utility poles. So in these two pictures here, it's the same pole, but just two different angles. It's showing the full extent of a micro wireless facility with the antenna located on top of the utility pole. Sort of down towards the lower half of the pole, you'll see equipment located there. And in this example, it's also showing an above-ground equipment cabinet. And these cabinets, my understanding, are used to provide backup power for these types of facilities. This is just a close-up showing that equipment that is generally positioned on the lower half of the pole. And then this slide here is just a close-up of the equipment cabinet, just to give you a general sense of the size and scale of that piece. And this last example is showing a micro wireless facility located on a streetlight. And this example comes from just up north in the city of San Francisco. And one of the things I just wanted to point out, and maybe it's already sort of apparent in this image, is that in cases where a micro wireless facility is located on a street pole, it's generally, generally you get better design outcomes, or there's greater opportunities to actually screen it, simply because where there's existing signage, you might be able to hide some of the equipment. Looking at the image on the right-hand side, sort of towards the middle of the pole, you'll see two sort of black equipment devices positioned right behind some signage. And then generally here, you're not seeing any kind of additional cabling or fiber optic material. It's all within the pole. And then in this case, there's no above-ground mounted cabinet. So presumably, they were able to get all the rest of the equipment underground. So as mentioned in the staff report, Verizon approached the Planning Division about a few months ago with a proposal to install facilities across the city, including in single-family neighborhoods. And so their proposal is to use existing PG&E poles to hold their equipment. And in some cases, they did mention that some of the poles would need to be replaced. However, they anticipate positioning the new pole in the exact same location as the existing pole. With Verizon's proposal, they indicated that they're looking at approximately 23 sites across the city. And as shown here, the image on the left is actually a visual simulation of their proposed installation, which you can see the antenna at the top, the equipment on the lower half of the pole. It's not indicated here whether or not they would be able to achieve underground facility, but it's just not in the visual simulation. So that would be additional information that we would want to explore with this, should an application be submitted. And of course, the image on the right are locations where Verizon is currently looking. So we asked them to give us some detail about where they're looking to install the facilities, and we mapped them out. And this here shows a general geographic distribution of where those would be. And as you can see, they're pretty much throughout many of the different neighborhoods here in So when we had our conversations with Verizon, because they were proposing to apply for 23 individual sites, we reached out to them and asked if they would be willing to work with us and instead of submitting for all 23 at one time, we asked if they could submit four to five sites at a time. And that is something that they agreed to. We also informed them that we are going to be looking to achieve the best possible design, given that they could potentially be the first wireless carrier to submit for a micro wireless facility. We wanted to set a good precedent in using some of the design standards that we have in our existing wireless ordinance. And we also conveyed to them that we really want them to avoid placing bulky equipment at the base of the pole, as well as avoiding using above-ground mounted cabinets along residential sidewalks, as you've seen in the San Jose example. The next thing we talked about with, actually, let me talk about permits and procedures before I get to that. So in looking at these facilities, one of the things that's important to convey is that we're somewhat limited. And then this is probably not something new to the council, but as you may know, according to regulations set forth by the Federal Communications Commission or the FCC, cities cannot outright prohibit these facilities. But they can regulate and potentially deny applications based upon design and aesthetics. So in order to move forward with an installation of such a facility, a carrier must first receive approval by either getting a conditional or a minor use permit. A conditional use permit would need to be reviewed by the Planning Commission, whereas the minor use permit would be reviewed by the zoning administrator. And the difference between the review authority really has to do with location. So if a site is within a residential neighborhood, it will need to go to the Planning Commission. Whereas if the site is in a commercial or industrial location, it will need to be reviewed by the zoning administrator. So one other critical aspect of reviewing these applications involves a federally mandated shot clock. So not only does FCC pose limitations on the ability to disprove such applications, they also require certain processing timelines. So in, for a new micro wireless facility, it would be required to be acted on within 150 days of submittal. And there's other types of shot clock processing requirements, whereas any kind of alteration would require 60 days. And actually, there's a typo in the presentation, so let me clarify. An alteration, trading like-for-like requires 60 days, that's the shortest timeframe. And then an enlargement, sometimes you have facilities that have three antennas and they want to add an additional, those have to be acted on within 90 days. So we are subject to the federal shot clock mandate as well. One of the things that we believe is that community outreach will be a key step in the processing of applications. And so we are going to require that all applicants reach out to neighbors before submitting a formal application. And this is because in the past, so we're sort of learning from past experience, whenever a macro facility was proposed in a residential zone, the city received many comments from neighbors who expressed concerns over their radio frequency levels. So they had health and safety concerns, as well as concerns from noise coming from either generators or some of the equipment used to, the cooling fans used to cool the equipment. So we expect to hear from neighbors when carriers start performing their neighborhood outreach. So this is one of the reasons we're here tonight, is to let the council know that while these facilities are intended to improve the many devices that we all use or most of us use, residents are going to have questions about the health and safety of these, as well as probably concerns about aesthetics or any potential noise impacts, if any, coming from these facilities. Staff has experience in dealing with the macro wireless facilities, but less experience with the micro. So there will be a bit of a learning curve and a lot of questions to ask. I'm not a wireless expert, but I can explain, you know, to the council that this proposal is likely to be coming forward and that we're going to be needing to work planning in close coordination with our peers in public works engineering, given that these facilities will be in the right of way, as well as probably some level of coordination with PG&E because it will be on PG&E poles. As with all projects that go to Planning Commission and the zoning administrator, just to reiterate, not only are we asking applicants to reach out early on, and we're also letting applicants know that they can use some of the city facilities because most of the times for a regular planning project, you're meeting on the site or in an office. And given that the wireless carrier is likely to batch these in groups, in neighborhood groups, we're inviting them to use our city facilities for outreach and a presentation to the neighbors and a Q&amp;A opportunity. But once the formal application is submitted and is reviewed and found ready to be forwarded to either the Planning Commission or zoning administrator, we will be sending out formal notices to all property owners within 300 feet of the project site. So the next steps, really, in wrapping up my presentation to the council, is that should we receive an application for a micro wireless facility or facilities? We will inform the council once those are received. And in the meantime, we're also, you know, sort of on track to update our wireless ordinance and to clarify procedures with the FCC for consistency. And then at the same time, we can also look for opportunities to strengthen some of our design standards as we begin reviewing, you know, these micro wireless facilities. And that's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I'm sure we have some questions. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. I have several, a number of questions, Lisa, maybe we can just sort of flip through slide by slide. So if we go back to, let's see, one, two, three, your fourth slide, the first picture of one of these things, you know, a sketch, what it might look like.
This one?
Nope. Back a few more. We had the orange thing. One more. There you go. Do we have any sense of what the relative RF energy levels are of these things relative to the typical kind of cellphone complex, cellphone tower complexes that are there? And the reason I ask that is because that often tends, as I recall, to be a significant issue for people beyond noise and stuff. And I'd be interested in knowing whether we can sort of tell them, well, more people will be, you know, in the coverage area, but the actual concentration of energy is less because of the design of these things.
Yeah, from what I understand, I don't have a technical answer for you, so I don't know the levels, but the signal, I believe, is shorter. It has a shorter range than the macro facility. And in terms of its strength, that would be something that we would be asking the wireless carrier to disclose. And in fact, with all of these facilities, they would be required to submit a report, just as the macro facilities do.
Let me leave it with staff, then I would be, I don't think anybody else is, I'd be interested in knowing sort of the technical answer to that question. So that can be done offline. Next question has to do with the page that has the map on it, the background proposal by Verizon. You see that one little icon that's on Crestview Drive just south of Melody?
That's my house.
I'd like it moved a little further south so it's right next to Bob's house.
Okay.
Just, I just want to make a note of that.
Thanks.
You're welcome. I want to make sure you have good cellphone reception.
I may, I may decide to run.
There you go. All right. Next couple of questions are on the permits and procedures slide. So do we have sufficient, and this may be a Greg question, do we have sufficient statutory authority to simply require that the, not the antenna that goes on the top of things, but that the electronics, the processing stuff must be not visible? It must be underground? Just as a categorical requirement?
I don't think we can do it on a categorical basis because the, our review is very limited. And one of the things that is required under the law is that we can't prohibit the delivery of these types of services. So if there's a technical reason that they can't underground it at a particular location, we have to accommodate that.
Could we, could we limit it so, could we basically say that unless there is a bona fide technical reason, it must be underground? In other words, that cost alone is not an issue?
Well, there's probably too much tonight to talk about all the details, but there's, the main issues are, the federal government has limited us to aesthetic review. We also can't discriminate between carriers. And we also cannot prevent the provision of wireless services. So in those areas, if we can develop an ordinance that accommodates all that, we can. But I think blanket prohibitions might be difficult to enforce.
I understand that, and I appreciate that. And in general, I tended, I was asking the question because it's simpler to phrase it that way. Blanket prohibitions are almost always harder to do. But I at least wouldn't mind seeing serious consideration given to making it as difficult as, or as focused on the aesthetics as we can, because Bob and I were having a sidebar conversation. Some of those pictures, the real things, they look pretty ugly, okay? So I'll just leave that as my feedback to staff. And your comment, Greg, about drafting an ordinance actually is a good segue into my last question, which is, my takeaway here is that I appreciate the update, we're anticipating an application's going to come in. So actually, my question is, why shouldn't we, like, immediately task staff and the Planning Commission, go back and review our ordinances and come up with whatever changes you think are consistent with whatever the rest of the dius thinks we ought to do? I mean, I've weighed in about the aesthetics thing, but why aren't we doing that?
Well, our current ordinance is actually not very old. And what we need, what we want to update is to incorporate the provisions of the shot clock. So we do have aesthetic controls that are pretty good in our ordinance that are not, that have not been preempted or taken away. But it is this, these timelines and the taking away of our discretion is the part that our ordinance hasn't really that our ordinance hasn't really addressed yet.
Let me just, and again, we'll see what everybody else says, maybe just leave staff with the observation. Those changes need to be made, but in the sense, we're forced to make them because we've been preempted. So I'm less interested in those, because that's kind of like, well, we have to do whatever we're told we have to do. But even if it's relatively recent, doing a review to see whether or not we tweak words and stuff is important for two reasons. One is we may want to evolve it, because this is now going to be much more broadly dispersed in the city than previously was the case. And the other is it creates a forum for the community to be educated that this is coming, right? Because every time, if we hold Planning Commission hearings and draft regulations and whatnot, that's going to get people's attention.
And I didn't mean to say that we weren't going to look at the latest cases and make sure that the sentiment and our, you know, preserve our local authority over aesthetics. Obviously, that's very important, so.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Bob. Just a couple, I was looking at these control boxes. Is there one for every micro facility? There was a, the one on where you have examples, I think you got a, it's before that, that one. Those are pretty big.
So, so I'm not sure, is it, are the ones on the poles or the equipment cabinet?
The one there on the ground. Does that, does that in lieu of, you have an underground facility?
Correct.
Or underground box?
Correct, right. This is, this is an example, obviously, of one that is above ground for reasons, you know, which are unknown. Maybe it wasn't feasible, or maybe there was some sort of barrier to getting that equipment box located beneath the ground. In some cases, you know, it's done in a very clean way. So the answer to, so your question was, I believe, do multiple carriers need the same equipment box?
No, no, that wasn't my question. My question was, is one of those boxes needed for every micro cell site that they install? Like, you have a proposal for 23 of them by Verizon, that we wouldn't be seeing 23 of these boxes, would we? Because some of the equipment might be underground.
That's a good question. So my understanding is that typically, these equipment cabinets are, come along with one micro wireless facility. So Verizon's proposal right now consists of one antenna, some equipment located on the pole, and potentially, an above-ground cabinet. Now, we don't know these details at this point, but those components would accompany, would consist of one facility. So where there may be one pole on one street with a micro wireless facility, say around the corner or down the block, you could have another one, potentially, with another cabinet. So the proliferation of cabinets is kind of a real thing, and that is one of our big concerns. And we've made that clear to Verizon, that that's not something we want to see. So they're going to need to work hard to figure out if it's feasible to get these underground. That's what, we want them underground, if at all possible.
I think the only people to be happy would be the artists that would want to sign up to paint them. But, okay, so thank you for that. The other question I have is, would one of those micro cell towers be able to handle multiple carriers? Or would we, would Verizon take, say, 23 of them, and AT&amp;T comes and takes another 23 of them, or 40 of them, or whatever?
Yeah. My understanding that it's potentially possible for another micro carrier, wireless carrier, to locate on a pole where there already is one. But I think the challenge has to do with the structural integrity. I mean, you can only put so much on one pole, especially perhaps on a PG&E pole. So for example, and I can get confirmation from the carrier, but my understanding is that a wireless carrier could share the same antenna at the top, but they would need their own equipment on the pole. So it could get, potentially get a little crowded, unless it's controlled in some way.
Okay.
Right.
All right. That's it for now.
Mr. Grochuck.
This is kind of pie in the sky, I think, because it's been talked about for years, but undergrounding the utilities altogether, you know, PG&Es, lines and so forth, has been talked about. If these are put in, what does that say to undergrounding utilities?
Well, the master agreement that we've been looking at talks about relocation of facilities, and it does contemplate relocating to different poles, like if PG&E has to replace the pole, or, and undergrounding is actually contemplated, too. So there is a provision for relocating the facilities.
Can you tell us what that, what it would do?
Well, if we, if everything was undergrounded, then there would be, what would go in place would be streetlight poles that would be city poles. And so that's where they would be requesting to put the antennas on the city poles. Because there would be still, there'd still be light standards in the areas where the PG&E poles are, the lights are attached to the PG&E poles.
However, there are places in San Carlos, I didn't see it on any of these maps, but for instance, like Graceland, there's PG&E poles, but there's no light poles. So if, for instance, the PG&E went underground on Graceland, then what happens?
Well, I think our, this is probably, that's probably a public works question, but I think that if, in all of our undergrounded areas, there are streetlight poles that are aluminum or other materials that would have to be installed for safety reasons. It doesn't mean they'd be as frequent or as many of them, but there'd be some light poles at intersections and such.
Okay.
And just reminded that, you know, probably in a worst-case scenario is the carrier would just demand that a pole be, an antenna be installed, because of the provision of service issue.
So Lisa, I had a couple, so on this, actually, this is the right one. You know, Ron asked the question I was going to ask. There's 23 here, you got Sprint, you got AT&amp;T, you know, it could be three times this many. I'd be, want to be first, so I get my best poll, I guess. But this almost looks like it's more than one carrier on this, on the middle one, or maybe it isn't. You know, maybe it's just one carrier. But having said that, let's say, let's say this is a Verizon poll, or a Verizon thing, and they've got the box on the left-hand side there. You see the box? Okay, Sprint comes in. They need another box, you think?
That's my understanding, however, that would be something I'd need to confirm with.
So in theory, you could have a couple of boxes, or three boxes. In theory, possibly.
In theory, it's possible, but there are probably some technical limiting factors to that. And it's just a matter of us kind of working through these applications and finding out more about, you know, these components. This is equipment that's somewhat different from what we're used to seeing, so to the extent.
But it's theoretically possible, that, you know, you'd say, okay, two people would want the same pole, and let's say Verizon said, sure, you can use our pole, that's fine, or whatever, and put the thing in the thing, and then build another box.
Yeah, that's, my understanding is that they can share an antenna and have, put their equipment on the pole.
It's going to be, I don't think we can paint that many. But that's another story. Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate the information. And again, this is a very difficult area, because.
Sure.
Yeah.
I just was curious whether there was any interest, or what the level of interest was in the DIAS about tasking the Planning Commission to go back and look at this and see if there are things to change. I mean, I brought up that point. I mean, if nobody wants to, that's fine. I just.
We're pretty limited. I think Greg's going to look at the aesthetics, and that's really.
That was something that's in, being pursued anyway.
Okay. That's fine.
Oh, I had one more thing. It says 10 days, one of your slides says 10 days before the public hearing. That's the day you're going to mail it?
Yeah, once the application.
Yeah, I don't think that's a good idea. I mean, personally, maybe nobody else does either. I think it should be at least 14 days, because then they'll get it with 12 days. This way, they'll get it with eight or seven, gives them barely a week. I think for public outreach, I think it should be 14. Is there a law that says it has to be 10?
Yeah, that's according to our public noticing requirements.
Can't we extend that? Can't we make it more, without passing an ordinance?
Yeah, that's our minimum requirement. We could look, we could look at asking the applicant to provide a longer-term notice, but that's a good suggestion.
I'm just saying, if you mail it on 14, you get it on 12 or 11. If you mail it on 10, you could get it on 7 or 6. It doesn't give very many people a chance to come and talk to us. And they'll, you know, I mean, that's just me. You're going to want to, it's not that we're going to be able to deal with, unfortunately, the questions they have, but I just think it should be longer.
I'm just, I think it's a good suggestion. I just don't know if it's something we can enforce that easy, but it may be something that we can work into the agreement, for example.
Okay. But, okay, all right. Well, I just wanted, if we can do it, that I think, I think you'd get more people coming. I think you'd get more people coming. But anyway, all right. Thank you, Lisa, very much. All right, moving on. New business. 10A, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate a temporary lease agreement or right-of-entry agreement for the parking structure at Wheeler Mr. Seve.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Al Seve, Community and Economic Development Director. So this evening, just to reiterate, what staff is asking for is for you to pass a resolution that would give the city manager some authority to sign a right-of-entry agreement for temporary lease agreements, so that the city can enter the Wheeler Plaza parking garage. And tonight, I have some folks that are here to help answer questions later on. That's Ray Panic and Henry Wang of KB Homes. Technical issues. Okay. Okay, so what I thought I would do is just quickly refresh everybody's memory about the Wheeler Plaza project and kind of how it got to where it is. And this blue area represents the Wheeler Plaza Development Project area, and that's between Walnut Street and Laurel Street, and then San Carlos Avenue and Cherry Street. And the Wheeler Plaza surface parking lot had about 187 parking spaces. And as you will recall, when the project started construction, we had a construction parking management plan in place. And what that did is it took the city's property here at the Foodville site and turned it into a valet-assist parking lot that was overseen by KB Homes. KB Homes is the developer of the project. And KB Homes also leased the Samtrans, the top two floors of the Samtrans building. And then there was some other construction parking that was leased from Samtrans along El Camino Real. Once it's fully operational, there would be 254 parking spaces in the new Wheeler Plaza parking garage, which is a net increase of 67 spaces from the former Wheeler Plaza surface lot, and 25 short-term bike spaces. As noted, KB Homes is the new developer, and they started construction in May of 2017. And under the current development agreement, it says that they were, it was intended that they would deliver the parking garage for the public by April of 2018. But due to some circumstances with regard to construction and some issues with the power plant, some modifications to the power plant for the building, that was delayed. And most recently, in discussions with KB Homes, they mentioned that, due to the delay, it would look like it was going to be mid-August for delivery of the parking garage. So moving forward, I am pleased to announce that Wheeler Parking Plaza is now ready for parking, as of today. And so that's the good news, is community development staff worked with Redwood City Fire and Thompson Construction to move the timeline up. And we did that by speeding up the inspections for fire and life safety, getting path of travel constructed inside the, inside the building, and making sure that everything was checked out and safe for the public. And we've, we've got temporary signs started to be set up on the interior of the building. We wanted to hold off on setting up the temporary signage on the exterior before we let you know that it was available for the public. And another way that we did this is, there are generators there providing power to the building. So a couple of generators provide ample power to all the systems in the building now. And so that's why we don't need the main power plant to be operational. Now, once this is occupied, KB Homes is saying that they will no longer need the valet-assist lease or the Samtrans lease moving forward. That would leave 33 parking spaces over at the Foodville site, and that's a city site. So that would be two-hour parking, and we'd have both floors available, the bottom floor and the second floor available for the public. That would be 248 free public parking spaces and 25 bike spaces that will be available. And these are some photos of the interior of the parking garage. The contractor has done a really good job cleaning up the facility. They emptied it, emptied it out, power washed it, and it's clean and ready to go. As you can see there on the left-hand side of the screen, that's the first floor. And there you have the second floor. And a few more photos. On the left-hand side of the screen, you see the entry point. And this is an entry point right behind Blue Line Pizza. So that sidewalk that goes along Blue Line Pizza, a sidewalk was constructed. And this was also constructed, too. It's a, it's a construction barriers to protect people when they walk into the building here. So, and that signage is currently up there. And then you would walk in right into this door. From here, you'd go in, make a left, walk in, and this just shows the stairs between the first and second floor, and you can see that it's ready to go. And on the far right-hand side of the screen, you see the bicycle parking area and the accessible parking. Now, there is an elevator that's been constructed inside the building, but the elevator won't be ready until the power plant's up and running and the elevator's been inspected. However, it's not required for occupancy of the building, because the accessible parking spaces are located on the ground floor. So according to fire and the building official, the parking garage can be occupied now. Now, in terms of how people get in and out of the building, the, on Walnut Street, we would have your main access point on Walnut Street here. So cars would enter, there'd be a big red banner here, and other banners located around the building to direct people to this location. And so people would enter, you can park anywhere on the ground floor. And once you exit your car, you could exit at that doorway we just looked at, and here's the stairs that we just looked at. So you can exit out here through that protected area and out onto Laurel Street. And then there's another exit point here that would go out through the Wells Fargo parking area, and there's another stairwell located here. If you wanted to use the second floor, you can see that the ramp is located here. You'd go up to level two and back down and so forth. And so that's how the parking garage would operate. In terms of signage, the, we've started to have some of the interior signage installed. This is some of the exterior signage that's ready to go up as soon as possible this week. Or as soon as we can, if you allow the resolution to move forward, and we can get the attorneys to get together this week and get that paper signed by the city manager, then we'd be able to open this. And in terms of the future, what we're looking at is electronic signage on the exterior of the building, an LED display that would be mounted right outside the main garage entrance. That would display the number of parking spaces that would be available in the parking garage as you drive up. In terms of getting the word out, we would use all our forms of getting the word out in public relations, newspaper publications, and other media. In terms of next steps, as I noted, one of the key things is to get that, whatever legal document needs to be prepared and signed, done quickly. And that's because we don't own the building yet, and it's their property. They've given us authorization to occupy the building, but we do need some, something that says that we can occupy it on paper. We would need to install some two-hour time limit signage, and the Public Works Department has ordered the signage for that. has ordered the signage for that. In the meantime, and we could put up some advisory signs that generally you're supposed to park for two hours. We'll be talking to the police department about not enforcing a two-hour limit until the formal signs go up in the parking garage. And then the street line electronic sensors will be installed. We have to do that after the main power plant is up and running. This might be August, September, October timeframe when that occurs, and that's when the electronic, electronic signage will be operational. And again, we're just about ready to let folks know that they can park in the parking garage as soon as possible. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Seve. Mr. Olbert.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Al. Great presentation. And by the way, thank you to you and your staff and everybody else on staff who got us to this point, because I know you didn't highlight it, but there was some worry not too long ago that it might be quite a bit longer than today to be ready to go. So, good job on that. Just a couple of questions. One was, I was trying to remember, when all is said and done, and we have access to the spaces that, structures finished and whatnot, how many spaces are we getting out of this?
254 spaces.
Okay. So, so we're, the 248 temporarily is very close to the 254.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to get to. And one other question I had, and I suspect I know the answer of it, but it's a pretty significant issue to me, so I just want to ask you again so we can be on the record. When you talked about the, doing the reviews and the safety checks and whatnot on an expedited basis, that always makes me nervous, because, not because people deliberately make mistakes, but it's just when you rush stuff, it takes time. So are we confident that, that, that those checks and requirements were fully met and that the thing really is safe?
Absolutely. Yeah. We, we, I have an email from the fire department stating that to the city of San Carlos that it's safer occupancy.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Grokot.
So, a couple of questions here. The, do we know on the Samtrans garage how much it actually got used? Was there any monitoring of that?
You know, we did monitor that on a fairly, we'd drive up and take a look. And for instance, this last Friday, there was about 25 parking, you know, people parking in there around lunchtime.
Okay. And the reason I ask is I'm curious. You said in your report, I believe, that once this garage opens, the thing with Samtrans will cease?
Yes.
Was there, could there be any consideration of overlapping that for a week or something? I don't know. It seems like, you know, just so, because of the learning curve here. If there's 25 people that you have seen, you know, that could, that could actually be 100 people that are typically using that, and then, you know, getting educated on the new process, including, I guess, the elimination of the 33 spaces at where Foodville was.
Yep, the elimination isn't going to happen. That stays, the 33 stay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's ours. And, and it's likely, and we can ask KB Homes this, but it's likely that they'll need to give notice to Samtrans. I don't know if they've already done that. It's probably some kind of notice in the lease, so we, they probably will have to have it open till the end of the month, but we can, we can ask that question.
So there could be an overlap anyways?
Yes.
Just because of, okay. And then, the two-hour limit is, you know, where my mind went immediately is, that's an opportunity for promotion. In other words, you, you just, I know you talked about telling the police, hey, you know, be gracious here. But you could actually use that as a promotional item, you know? Park here for as long as you want, for two weeks, and when it becomes a problem and the place is full or something, I don't know. You know, something like that, that, that just comes to mind. That's the kind of thing businesses do, is, you know, we're open, hey, you know, come in and get a free hamburger or something. My last question is just the, what does, what does staff see as the reality of the use of this garage initially? Because even right now, you know, frequently, for instance, in the morning, I drive Walnut Street, because I live, you know, where I live. And going by that construction site, there's oftentimes where you can't, or they, you know, they've got the guys at either end with the stop or, or slow sign. I don't know. It just seems like Walnut Street already is being limited in its use, that block of it. So that, you know, the segue to that is limited use of this parking structure.
Yeah.
Yet we're getting rid of the Samtrans thing, so.
Yeah, you, you make a very good point, and we've talked about traffic on Walnut Street, and we'll, we'll put out some signs to say that, you know, please drive slow and things like that. But the contractor is aware that, and they're ready to accept the public in that parking garage. They, they understand that it has to be open, that they need to work around it. Their, all their contractors are parking underneath, underground now. So we're aware of that, and we talked about different ways to alert the public to be careful when they drive down there and drive slow.
Thank you, Bob. I, I only have one, sort of a silly question. I noticed that the driveway is in the middle of the structure. And that's in and out, right?
Yes.
How wide is that?
It's wide enough. I know, I don't know.
Wide enough? That's a crazy question.
Yeah, it's wide enough to get in and out. And, and I don't know the exact width of it. We can, we can look at that, and I can provide that information to you later. But I know that it's, it's wide enough for two vehicles to exit and enter safely.
The only thing that concerns me about, you know, having a grace period for people to park for an unlimited amount of time is that I've been just told anecdotally that you've got a lot of construction workers on the Cherry Chestnut project that are parking on the surface streets. And I, I could see them saying, oh, I'll just park there all day. And I don't know how many vehicles are, you know, how many workers that are working on that project that have vehicles, but I could see that being a problem.
Yeah. It's potentially a problem, and it will be difficult to, I think, enforce, like, who's a contractor, who's not. And then, that'll be tough for the first few weeks until we get the signage up, I think. Right now, I think we can just advise people and just say, hey, look, you know, on your good graces, please park for two hours and, you know, kind of let them do it for a little while. It'll be tough to, you know, kind of enforce that component of it.
Will there eventually be those little discs in there?
Yeah. Street line is what, what it's called.
Yeah.
And those will be installed.
So, are we going to, when the street line people do their sensors, are they going to do it during the day?
We're going to try and get them to do it night.
Thank you. Okay. And Stephen, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but when did you order the two-hour signs? And I, hopefully, it wasn't today. Doesn't like put you on the spot.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, yes, we did, we did order them, and we do it expect today.
Yeah. And how long does it take?
We believe approximately two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay. All right. We didn't know it was coming. Anyway, okay. All right. Mr. Olbert.
Thank you, Bob. Actually, the discussion, one of the questions that, that Matt asked about, sort of a learning curve time with the expiration of the parking over at, at the Samtrans building, that actually sparked a thought in my mind. In effect, because of the construction traffic, the, let's call it the full access, the full constructive access to the parking spaces there is always going to be somewhat limited, at least during construction. Okay? Now, that was obviously part of the arrangement that we agreed to, because we said, well, we want access to the spaces, but you're going to keep building on top of that. So in that sense, I view that perhaps loss of some capacity effectively of the parking, that's kind of on us, because I know I didn't think about that at the time. But, given that, what would it take and what do we think it would cost to perhaps, you know, for some period of time, extend the deal with Samtrans, but we pick up the cost of it? Okay? Just, just to deal with that, because, and also to deal with the learning curve issue Matt was talking about. If it's not outrageous, I'd certainly be willing to consider doing that, because I just don't want lots of horns honking and people saying, well, I can't get in here because of the construction deliveries, and now I have no place to park. Okay? I'd rather they have a place to park.
You know, I, I think that's, that idea is, is a good one. However, what's happening at Foodville, just to kind of take your idea step, is right now, there's about 50 parking spaces available at the Foodville site, because it has valet-assist, and they can put the, the cars in line and stuff when it gets full. Without valet-assist, there's only going to be 33. So if we picked up the M-Park folks, instead of the Samtrans, you're getting, you know, what is it? Another, you know, yeah, 17 parking spaces there. I mean, that may be an approach that, that you would consider.
In fact, let, let me ask a question of Jeff, and of Greg, perhaps. Given the resolution that we're proposing to adopt, does it give you sufficient flexibility that if, assuming the rest of the council was supportive of the idea, if we saw it as a problem, that you could arrange to, to cut one of these type of deals that Al and I are talking about? Or would you have to come back to us? Because you have to come back to us, that's going to be a delay of some period of time.
I believe we would have to come back to you, but it wouldn't necessarily be urgent. So in other words, I could enter into a lease, you know, like a month-to-month lease within my signing authority, and then bring it back to the council to, to extend it out further to the dollar amount that got above my authorized level. So, timing shouldn't be an issue. We, we can make that happen if there's an interest from the council. We have the same philosophy, I think, today that we had a year ago, which is we're going to continue to want to explore every possible option to make every possible space in the downtown area available to the public that we can.
Well, let me just leave it then as, as I, if, if any of my colleagues are interested in doing this, I, I would not have a problem with either granting or the authority, or, as you just said, under the scope of, of what you think you have, you can do it. I would certainly support you doing that if there's a problem, because I just don't want there to be a problem.
Okay. Is there anyone for this? This isn't, I guess it's a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on any of this? Okay. We can, can we find out, Mr. Seve, these gentlemen in the back? Could you come up, please, and tell me how mu, if you know, maybe you don't, what you're paying Samtrans? Then you probably don't know. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Ray Panic, Senior Vice President for planning, KB Homes, South Bay, San Ramon, California. What time is it? We pay, da-da-da, $1,400 a month for the Samtrans parking spaces. We pay M-Park, it ranges from about $11,000 to $14,000 a month.
So I'm confused.
So the, so the, the M-Park is the company that provides the valet-assist at the Foodville lot.
Okay.
So that's for the personnel.
That's going to go away.
To manage that. Correct.
Right. So theoretically, if we could make a deal with Samtrans for the same amount, it'd be $1,400. Have you, have you canceled that or anticipated?
We have not, at this point.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't know when you're anticipating doing that, but the staff can work with you to, maybe we can just pick that up. That seems very nominal.
Well, yeah, I think, I think, I understand that attorneys are going to have a call, or maybe I would suggest a meeting on Thursday and.
I thought they were going to, I thought they were going to meet tonight, quite honestly.
It's a little late now, but.
No, it isn't.
We can, we can work through that and, and have that discussion also.
Great. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you. I appreciate you letting us know what the dollars are now. They're way under, thank you very much. Appreciate that. So, anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution 2018 dash.
Eighty.
Eighty. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos authorizing the city manager to negotiate a temporary lease agreement or right-of-entry agreement for the parking structure at Wheeler Plaza.
A second. All right. Moved in second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing, um, roll call, please.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mary Grisilli.
Yes. And thank you, Al, and everyone else who was involved in this, KB, whoever. Appreciate you getting it done quicker than we're, than later, as they say. And Greg, I know, you can stay up late tonight, Greg. It's okay. Thank you very much. All right. Item 11A, council members, reports, subcommittees, regional boards, commissions. Anyone, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report on a couple of items from committees I've sit on, Grand Boulevard. They've introduced this El Camino Rapid Bus Transit Service. It's a pilot project, and it's separate from their regular El Camino only. There were a lot of other things covered at that meeting, but that was the one that was, the one that jumped out at me. The electrification project on Caltrain is moving along quite quickly. They poured 350 foundations, 622 poles have been installed, so that's moving along. And finally, I had an opportunity with my wife to visit the new apartments at the, at the train station, the Tressle Apartments. And they've rented 69 out of 77 units already. Their website went live in mid-February. They had five lease applications within 15 minutes. The walls facing the back of the apartments, facing the tracks, are eight inches thick. And we saw three trains go by in the 20 minutes we were in there, and there was, it was sort of a low hum. So it was not bad at all. It's, they're really very nice units. And some of them have actually rented at the BMR rate of $1,300 a month. I won't, I won't go into all the other rents, because they're pretty high, but at least some of the BMR units are being rented. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Grokot.
Couple items, based on public comment from two weeks ago. There was at least one person who came to the council and asked us to consider leafblowers and either banning them or constricting them. And I have an interest in that, in part because when I was going through my cancer treatment, that was one of the things I had to dodge, because you can't breathe in particulate matter when you're going through cancer treatment. I would very much have an interest in having that brought to the dais, at least as a study session, to look at ways we might either restrict or ban. And I'm asking if there's two other council members who would be interested in that.
I'd be in favor of looking at it.
I'd be supportive of looking at it, but, but only if we, we basically run it through. I guess it would be the Planning Commission first, to do some parsing and, and whatnot.
Clarification then, Mark. What I asked for was not an action item on the dais, but a study session. So could we have a study session, and then maybe we, from there, we kick it to the Planning Commission?
Oh, no, I appreciate that. I understand what you said. It's just for me, that's the kind of thing I'd like to see the Planning Commission study and, and sort of survey things, and then come back to us with, as part of a study session for us. So, now, there may be somebody else who just wants to bring it right to the dais, but that, that's my contingency.
Well, doesn't, doesn't seem to, I mean, if he's, if you're, I guess you're in effect no, so that's, there's just two then. So, at this point.
No, I disagree, Mr. Mayor. I think, because I would be fine with what Mark's proposal is, is that it goes to the Planning Commission.
I'm fine with that, too. So if we want to have the Planning Commission.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
No, that's fine.
All right.
The other item was, we also had an individual come to us and ask to have crosswalks on Britton looked at. And I don't, you know, people make comments like that. I don't know what direction we're going on that. Maybe Steve knows we're already doing something on that, but if not.
If I recall, the, I think the mayor asked to get an understanding of where that request was in the queue. Do you recall?
Yeah, I think I, I think I, yeah, exactly.
I don't know if we have an answer to that yet.
Can Steve give us a comment on that, then?
Yes. That, you know, we, we did look at that, and that, that is in the queue. However, we've also been in contact with the, the individual, and she actually wishes to come to the next TNC meeting, which is scheduled for this coming, this next week. And so that will be an item on the agenda for her discussion.
Good. Okay, thank you. And then the last item I, I had is based on an observation of driving on the south end of Laurel, past the American Legion Hall, and then onto Magnolia, that whole area there.
The north end of Laurel?
Excuse me, did I say south? Yeah, I meant north, the north end. Excuse me, did I say south? Yeah, I meant north, the north end. That whole neighborhood has had something happen, and I don't know what it is, that has caused there to be parking on the street 24/7, to the point where Laurel Street is basically one way. And it's kind of dangerous where Magnolia merges in to Laurel, because the whole area is impacted. It's amazing also that Magnolia, most of the day, all the way down until you get to Elm Street, can be fully parked. And I saw something on Nextdoor, which makes me curious. On Nextdoor, there was an advertisement for the apartment building that's right there at Magnolia and Laurel Street, where you could rent the apartment for a certain amount, and if you wanted parking, you had to pay $200 extra a month. And so I'm curious if maybe that's what's going on with some of these apartments, is that they're offering no parking unless you pay extra for it, and people are opting not to take, not to pay the extra. And then it's impacting the streets in the neighborhood. But I have an interest in having staff look at that. I don't know if it takes three of us to direct staff to do some investigating and see what's going on, but I certainly would like to see what's, you know, have something looked into, find out what's going on that's causing that impact.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the legality of that is. I think maybe you could find out what
I'd be curious to look at the approvals of that, because if they're legally, a condition of approvals to provide parking, that doesn't sound like they're complying with it.
Right, no, all kidding aside, I mean, especially in that neighborhood, you might actually have to go to the owners and see what they're doing, because it would seem like that would, that wouldn't be right. So, okay.
Yeah, I agree. We'll have Greg take a look at the legal aspects, and we'll have our staff actually put some boots on the ground and see if we can't figure out what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Since this is, we're speculating here that that may be a problem, it may not have anything to do with it.
Okay, Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. Just three things. First off, just a piece of information about something that happened in a sister city of ours, a little bit to the south, that I personally found very intriguing, because it was something I didn't even know was lawful. The East Palo Alto City Council had some in-depth discussions about putting a commercial property-only parcel tax before its voters this fall. And I was not even aware that you could, for lack of a better term, discriminate amongst types of property like that. So I pass that on to my colleagues, just because, if I didn't know about it, perhaps you didn't know that it was possible either. I was approached by a woman at the farmer's market over the weekend, who asked me an interesting question. She actually tried to rent, or was looking at one point, about renting an apartment in the Transit Village complex. I believe like a two-bedroom unit was what she was interested in. But what turned her off was that she was told that she only would have a right to one parking space as a result of that. And I talked to Al about that this morning, and, because I remember the parking ratio that we required was higher than that, it was like one and a half units, one and a half spaces per bedroom. But apparently, there, how that one and a half spaces per bedroom gets allocated out is sort of at the discretion of the property owner, which raises the question in my mind about whether we ought to, given all the concerns about congestion and street parking and whatnot, allow that kind of flexibility when we approve projects, or whether we should say, no, if there's more bedrooms, then there have to be more spaces allocated to it. So I wanted to see if anybody, Al told me that something like this is going to come potentially before the Planning Commission later this year, and I just wanted to brief you guys, make sure you're aware of it. And if you're interested in the topic, I would definitely suggest you talk to Al. And my last comment is, I wanted to extend my condolences to the city manager about becoming the junior city manager in the Malpe household tonight, but I'm sure Shawna will do a fantastic job. And I'm sure you'll be able to pick up a few things from her.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate you guys allowing me to be a little tardy tonight, and your colleagues on the daily city council send their regards.
And since it's a Malpe day, certainly in the newspaper today, there was an article by Sue Leppard about your father and the great job that he's done for the county. So, God can't just get any worse.
He was there as well.
Yeah, I'm sure he was. It's, what's next after the county? But anyway.
Mr. Mayor, can I just, I just wanted to respond to something that Mark said. When I visited the apartments, that we did talk about parking. I do have the guy's card, and I will call him and find out. He did, I think he said there's at least one per space, but I think he was talking about virtually every resident had a parking space. And, but I'm not sure that that's quite accurate. I will call him and find out.
Thank you.
Okay. Staff comments on city administrative business?
Just two quick things. I don't know if you had heard yet, I got a text just before I started my drive down here, that we had a small grass fire up on Devonshire, was panned quickly, it's out now. No major structures or losses. They're doing an investigation into the cause, but you may hear about that later tonight. There was smoke in the area and whatnot. And also, just wanted to remind the council and the public that we won't be meeting for several weeks now, a little longer than that. Our next regular council meeting will be August 27th at the regular time in the regular location. So, I hope you all have a good summer recess. I'm sure we'll see you. We'll still be here plugging away at City Hall, but we'll be taking a break here.
All right. Anything else, gentlemen? If not, meeting adjourned. Thank you.